Ben Clark. Call the roll. Where's my pens? Who keeps stealing my pens?
Here.
I don't want that. I buy some pens. Somebody likes my pens.
Is that what I found? I got mine. It'll be worse.
I've got two and a pencil, so I'm good.
Mayor Hoffaer.
Here.
Mayor Paul Tenloa.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop. Councilmember Bensicourt.
Here.
Councilmember Corrello.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop.
Motion to excuse, uh, councilmember Bishop.
He's on his way.
I would second that anyway.
Just in case.
Just in case.
Oh, I just talked to him. He said he's on the way.
Oh, he's on here now.
Okay.
We have a call.
Okay. Alright. Uh, still late.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay, public comments. On closed session items, four point one through four point three. Any public comment? Not seeing any. Presentation by the city attorney.
That's the mayor members of the council. Um, just the three items, uh, that are listed on the agenda will be discussed tonight. There's no further addition.
Okay. Let's do it. I'm gonna go over there first.
All right. Thank you for your patience. Everybody, we're gonna go ahead and get the seven o'clock meeting started. We've got quite a few of very difficult legal issues that we're trying to get resolved. And sometimes it takes a few extra minutes and we need to wrap it up. So I apologize for the delay. And we... City Attorney, you wanna let's close out the five o'clock meeting, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All mayor and the mayor and all city council members were present enough so that they could discuss all three matters. Item four point one, conference with legal counsel, possible litigation. In closed session, the city attorney discussed this possible litigation with the city council and was requested to bring back additional information to the March meeting. Item four point two, community development associates at all versus city of Palmdale. In closed session, the city council has briefed on the status of this litigation and the recent mediation. A second day of mediation was set for later in February. There's no further reportable action at this time. Item four point three, conference with legal counsel, possible litigation. In closed session, the city attorney discussed this possible litigation with the city council and was provided unanimous direction thereon. There's no further reportable action at this time. That concludes the report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go we'll go ahead and we'll adjourn that. Five o'clock closed meeting. We'll call the seven o'clock meeting to order and we'll stand and do a pledge of allegiance, please. Could I have our Housing Commissioner, please, come up and lead us in the pledge? Have a moment of silence? Thank you. Thank you, Chris. City Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Mayor Chair Hopfauer?
Here.
Mayor Coltium Vice Chair Loa?
Here.
Councilmember Director Dintonport?
Here.
Councilmember Director Carillo?
Here.
Councilmember Director Lee?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Okay, number eleven is animal care. How about you handle this tonight? How about you handle this tonight? You got dogs?
I had dogs. All right. So we're gonna call Jesse? What do you have for us?
I have Moon.
She already greeted Carrie when she walked in. Hi, how are you, baby? So I have Moon with me here tonight. Moon is a six-year-old female gray and white kitty. She came to us, believe it or not, September 30th. And this was one of our Kohla High dogs. Their owners fell in some hard times, so they had to relinquish her. So she became ours. And she is up for adoption now, public adoption. And she's a really sweet dog. I had the chance to meet her tonight for the first time. And we went out in the yard and after she got through really sniffing everything up in the yard and remarking her territory, we started playing. And she's really good fetching a ball. She brought it to me and then started playing keep away, so. You know, she needs a little practice there. But she's a really sweet dog. She's shy at first and then she'll warm up to you and she'll just watch the cuddle. You know, she still needs a lot of leash work because she's been out in the wild for a while. You know, and being stuck in a cage for a long time, it really takes a toll on her. But now that we get a chance to work with her and really make her sociable, more sociable than she really is, she's gonna be a great dog. And one in time for Valentine's. So she's available now, she's got all her shots, she's got, well, she is altered and she's got her chip. So just come down to the shelter, pick her up, and if you do, come by and see Carrie and get the basket.
Well, that's great, Mayor, would you like to? No?
You're doing a fine job.
No, 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 I'm talking about taking her home.
Barb, trust me, Barb is watching right now.
You always bring beautiful animals in here, Jesse. And I know the entire city appreciates what you're doing, the whole animal control of it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's going with you. See? There's a method behind my madness law. She could be yours. Okay, moving on, item number 12. Public comments on consent calendar and non-agenda items. If you wish to comment on any item listed on the consent calendar, items number 14.1 through 14.7, please come forward to the podium, state the number and your comments. For non-agenda items, individuals have the opportunity to address the council on any subject regarding city business not on the, on the agenda. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on items not specifically referenced on the agenda. Please note, a three-minute time limit is imposed. You don't have to take the whole three minutes, but, you know. And if you could fill out a slip, that allows us to be able to follow back up with you after the meeting. City Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on any items?
Non-agenda items.
Okay. Bar, Barton?
Hello.
Hi.
I just wanted to speak on a couple of events that we have coming up in the community. We had a very successful homeless count on January 23rd in the service planning area. And I just wanted to talk about a couple of other things that we have coming up to address homelessness in the Antelope Valley. On February 15th, at 12 o'clock, the City of Hope Auditorium in Lancaster, there will be a screening of a movie called The Advocates. That movie is about the history of homelessness in Los Angeles and some possible solutions for it. There will be a full panel, including the director, a couple of people that are in the movie, as well as our local outreach director. And the Los Angeles sheriff's host team will be there on the panel to discuss those types of things. The other event that we have coming up is Thursday, February 27th, at Kensington Campus in Lancaster, which is a supportive housing unit in Lancaster. And that's a Everyone in 101 Workshop. That's understanding the homelessness crisis. The workshop will discuss the purpose of the Everyone in campaign powered by United Way, give an analysis of the housing and homelessness crisis, and explore the opportunities and solutions we can engage together to help house people in Lancaster's surrounding communities as well as Palmdale. Sorry, Antelope Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
Tracy LaMonica?
Tracy?
Good evening, my name is Tracy LaMonica. I am the program manager of Best Start under Children's Bureau. This is LaShonda LaChapelle, and she is the Best Start Program Specialist. Wanted to introduce ourselves to you today, tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. Best Start is First 5 LA's primary investment for engaging communities in a common vision and intention for children and families to thrive, working to strengthen community leadership and collaboration across sectors. Best Start is a promise that every child in Los Angeles County enters kindergarten ready to succeed in school and life. Currently, there are 14 Best Start community partnerships that bring together community leaders, parents, and residents to support each other and implement activities that support their vision for children and families. As the lead agency for Best Start in Region 5, our primary, our primary focus is to collectively work as a group to build a movement to keep children safe and support families raising children in LA County with our focus on the Antelope Valley by connecting parents with community resources and other organizations. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Item 19.1?
I don't think that's a consent calendar item. So we'll hold that till that item comes up. Any other non-agenda or general public comments? Is there anybody that didn't bother to fill out a form so we can follow up with you? State your name for the record, please.
I guess I don't like the reference that didn't bother to fill out a consent, a speaker's form. I don't, not required to fill out a speaker's form. So I don't really like it being implied that it's a negative thing that I didn't. My name is Marsha Furman. And I have just a comment about something on the non-agenda side of things. On the paperwork we have that you just read, Mayor, I noticed in very dark print is the note about the three-minute time limit. Since the combination of the consent calendar speaking time and the non-agendized speaking time, I would like clarification on that time limit. If I got up here to speak on something from the consent calendar, would I be, I would be required to stay within the three-minute time limit? But if I continued on into a non-agendized item, would that have an additional three minutes? Because this implies that for both those topics, if I get up to speak, I will only have three minutes. In the past, it was three minutes for the consent and three minutes for the agenda when they were divided. I can understand that, I kind of, not all bad, this combination. And so far, it's worked good for me, but I just would like clarification on, if you start off on a consent calendar and then move to an agenda, and we should make it clear that's what we are doing if we come up to speak, you know, that we get a reset for the three minutes for the, the second one.
We've always tried to be very flexible to encourage the community feedback.
No, okay, but that's, I want to make sure that that...
Could we have the city attorney follow up with her and he can give her an official answer on this?
Well, I think, I hope it's something that all the citizens will be informed of. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else, I apologize, that wasn't the implication. Anybody else that didn't fill out a form that would like to speak now?
I just want to say that for, for me as a councilperson, I would like to allow them three minutes for each, each of the groups that they want to talk about, agendized and non-agendized, as we have in the past. I also want to say that I'm, I am still against having to fill out the forms, and I always have been, because it's not a legal requirement and it does make people uncomfortable. Some people don't want to give their names when they want to come up and speak.
Actually, have we followed up on that?
I'm giving you my opinion.
Okay, well, your opinion, I'll go with the attorney's opinion.
Okay.
So...
We are, we don't have to require them to give their names.
Correct, absolutely, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right, that's different than filling out a form.
They don't have to fill out a form either.
Well, I think there's a difference of opinion.
I think there is, let's get that clarified, City Attorney.
They, they don't, I think it even says...
Microphone, let's record this.
They don't have to fill out a form and they don't have to provide their name.
Okay, I just went on the Institute for Local Government site and it said you, they're not required to give their name, but you can...
I, I don't want to do anything that discourages our citizens from coming forward and having a voice. I don't want to do nothing that prohibits them or, or puts them in a position to where they're not comfortable coming up and speaking. Because I want to hear what they have to say.
I just want to add one thing. It does help if we need to follow up with people, especially if they have a question. Like, I, I can get Marsha's phone number easily, but other people, it sometimes is difficult to follow up with them if you don't have a, if you just have a name, a lot of times you can't hit the number.
Right, yeah, well, I don't know about you guys, I usually have two or three meetings following a council meeting with people that have, have brought questions and issues.
I'm just saying, let's, let's leave it optional and not, not make people uncomfortable if they don't fill it out. But I don't want people to feel like they can't come up if they don't want to put their name out there.
Okay, and I, I think that's exactly what I agree with. That, that, that in reviewing the Institute for Local Government, you can't, you know, if they want to come up and say their name is Jim Bean, they can do that. But you, you can have reasonable provisions to be able to, to have the... I'll give you the reference.
Sure, no, I, I understand what you're saying, but why would we ever want to discourage or put some type of an obstacle in place on someone that wants to have a voice?
We want to hear from our residents, we love hearing from our residents, and we appreciate everybody here.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we all support that.
If you've got 80 people that want to speak, then you have to be able to make an adjustment in the timing.
No, I understand, this is, this is the fourth council I've been on, and this is the only council where we've, we've made this kind of requirement, so.
No, it's always, it's always been.
No, it's not.
And we didn't require it either. We didn't require it. She's required, wasn't required.
But I'm just saying.
Well, I'm not gonna let you sit here and opt to escape the record.
I was giving you my opinion, sir, and I'm entitled to my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just like you are.
Thank you, all right. Anybody else that would like to opine? I would encourage everyone to come on up and say anything you might want to say.
You got three minutes.
Maybe six, maybe six.
All that, all that, that took longer than the three minutes, all right. Okay, so we're gonna move on, item 13. Before that, though, while everybody's here, before everybody goes home, Mr. Loa wanted us to be sure that we announced that this evening, we're gonna be adjourning our meeting. I'll let you go ahead and take that.
This is for the son of a very important part of the community, Bishop Hearns. I believe we did close last month in memory of Sylvester Hearns, his son, who passed away. And the services were held out at the, at the church in, in Little Rock, in his memory. And so Sylvester Sly Hearns, that we again closed in his memory.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I didn't know if we had or had not on the previous one.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure if we did or not, but can we add somebody else in there? Actually, another group of people, Kobe and the, the other people in the helicopter that lost their lives.
Yep, the entire, entire group there, yes.
Mayor May, also, I'll make a statement and an announcement. This month is Black History Month. I would like us to recognize that this is Black History Month. And I believe they were having a workshop on February 25th. And at that time, we're going to agendize an item to present a proclamation, you know, servants of Black History Month.
Right, I tried to get it on the agenda, but by the time I found out that it was, it was too late for the required publication.
But we're doing it on February 25th, the next...
So everybody, keep in mind that with, with Black History Month, there's a lot of stuff that's already starting. There's a lot of, lot of programs going on within our city, neighboring city, and a county, and a lot of the churches, a lot of faith-based organization. So keep an eye out there, there's a lot of really good information and we need to remind ourselves sometimes, so. Okay, number 13, waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances?
As a move.
Second. Okay.
The unanimous set?
Okay, we got motions and seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, sort of. All right, item number 14, consent calendar. This is items number 14.1 through 14... 1417, yes. Any council member want to pull an item for discussion or comment on it before we vote?
All right, don't have any ideas, too.
Anybody? On the 14.6, I would just like to point out that with the transition to parks and recs and culture, or whatever it is, that we just added the word parks on that wherever it's necessary on 14.6. I think we're making a soft move onto that, but I don't want to have to come back for another adjustment.
That's acceptable, we can do that. Is that the one?
Yeah, yeah, it's within the conflict code. Okay, okay.
Give me just a second now.
Anybody else?
Give me just a minute. There's an item on the agenda, Palmdale Civic Center Complete Streets Project. I don't know if it extends out to Palmdale Boulevard and...
No, that's, I, I think that's the Avenue R?
No, that's the downtown area. We're sorry, I'm talking about 14.12.
Okay, all right, we'll pull 14.12 for further explanation on that one. Any other ones? So on 14.11, I'm gonna restate my concern that we're pulling all that equipment out of that park and is constantly complaints about the interface between the basketball court with the skateboard park and then the kids right in the middle of that. And it just seems not logical that we're not relocating that stuff, so. I want to vote for the equipment, but I'm, I'm again expressing my concern that we're merely doubling down on a bad design.
So whether we give star direction to look at an alternative location?
We, we tried to do that before and I didn't get support, so.
Well, we can do it now, I will support you on that. Do you want to make a...
Okay, well, okay, we'll pull 11 and 12, anything else? All right, so do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 11 and 12?
I'll make a motion.
Second. A motion and second for the consent calendar. Do you need that on the machine here, City Clerk? Okay, so if you push your buttons there, whoever had the second?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
We have motion and second, are we all clear on that now?
Yes.
Okay. There you go. Okay. I love it.
Hello.
Help me out.
So the item before you is a contract with Great Western Play Corps to replace the playground equipment, as you recognized at Maraker Park. We did confirm with the vendor today that the playground could be relocated. They do relocate playgrounds on occasion, so it is something we can unbolt and, and, and move. So if it's the direction of council or the interest of council, we can certainly explore other options at the park site and, and perhaps engage the community if that's something that you're interested in.
I think it would be helpful.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve this item with the option to look at an alternate location?
I'll second.
Lynn, did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I agree with Carrie that we can go ahead and, and have like a community meeting and get the public's input, and then we can take a look at where else on the site it might be conducive to put this park.
Mayor and I, just so we're clear, we're approving this to be installed in the current location, but we're gonna look at other locations for the future.
Unless you can find something where you can do it easier, we don't have to do it over, so.
Well, the issue is, at this cost, we're not gonna be able to relocate at this cost and redesign that whole area, so. But you want them to move forward with this installation, but looking at alternate locations that this stuff can be relocated in the future and bring that back and bring a budget back with you.
Whether we table it and see if there's an alternative source of funds and see what that much would cost for an alternative location, would you agree with that?
I think it's more cost-effective to, to wait and see if we can do the install and the relocation at the same time as opposed... The challenge, the challenge with that is, we have a grant that we were awarded that is helping to offset some of the cost of this, of this playground.
All right, let me try, thank you. All right, so I have a motion and a second with direction to continue to explore that just because of the interface issue. I think it's good that we're getting that equipment out there. This is the new inclusive equipment, right?
It certainly is.
That will allow disabled kids to be able to physically challenge... Physically challenge kids to be able to.
Inclusive for every child and every ability and it's got a lot of nice amenities to it.
What do you do with the old equipment?
The old equipment, the vendor removes and and it's, uh what, how old is it? Oh goodness, twenty-six years old? It's well beyond its lifespan.
I'm still trying for my.
We are, we, we we are, we're we're this close to confirming dates for uh community design meetings for both Oasis and Ariconionis, you'll have that information soon.
So the way we want to keep the equipment, since you're interested?
You know, I I can always find a use. Gently use the item, so.
I think it comes down to liability issues. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Did you push the buttons? Thank you, Carrie, I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
And Lynn, th- thank you for your consideration on that, so, yeah. The park was not nearly as big when all that stuff was being shoehorned into that corner over there, so. Thank you very much. Again? Oh, okay, alright, so on uh, so we're going on, so that shows uh. Unanimous on that?
Yes.
Okay, uh fourteen, twelve.
Item fourteen, twelve is an approval uh consultant services agreement with David Evans and Associates for. Planning, engineering and um design for the Palmdale Civic Center Complete Streets. Which is along Tenth Street East from Avenue Q nine to Q twelve.
Does not affect Palmdale Boulevard.
No, it does not.
Alright, that that was my only issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I moved to approve.
Somebody push the button?
Well, second it then.
Be quicker than a trigger.
Start voting.
Thank you for clarification, Aunt Lynn.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
So we're going to move to item number fifteen, the Housing Authority meeting. So if we can reset for Housing Authority, please? Put it on the record, don't tell me. So, when we get, when we get to it. Yeah, thanks. We got, we all set?
Hi, Mister Mayor, how are you?
Welcome, thank you very much for being here, and if we could have the city clerk call the Housing Authority meeting to order and uh roll call, please.
Chair Hoffauer.
Here.
Vice Chair Loa.
Here.
Commissioner Ben Zingford.
Here.
Commissioner Perillo.
Here.
Commissioner Bishop.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Braga Sanz.
Here.
Okay, we have.
We have a quorum.
We have the quorum, so on item number seventeen, is Public Comments and Housing Authority Consent Calendar. Uh, this is basically the minutes, does anybody wanna comment on the minutes? What, do you have a slipper nut? Alright. So seeing none, we'll go on to uh the consent calendar, which is item number eighteen. That's the minutes from the meeting of December third, would any of the housing commissioners like to make a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, have the motion and the second to approve eighteen consent calendar. Um, is this set up for us?
Vote required.
Voice vote on this was required, all in favor of uh of approval, say aye. Any opposed, hearing done, so ordered. Okay, item number nineteen, Mister Bishop, you said?
Uh, I'm gonna recuse myself from this item out of a abundance of caution from having done business with Valley Oasis.
Okay, so, you have to, uh if you've done business within the last year, you have to uh recuse yourself on these items, so. Okay, um, who's my staff?
Hi, Em.
Hi.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners of the Housing Authority. Tonight, the um Housing Division of Neighborhood Services brings before you an item. Um, we are recommending or requesting a housing authority to open a public hearing to receive testimony. On an affordable housing agreement between the Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale and Valley Oasis. And also to adopt a resolution HA twenty twenty dash zero zero one. Authorizing an affordable housing agreement between Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale and Valley Oasis. Um, the lease of a housing authority property located at five oh seven East Avenue Q four. A housing authority loan not to exceed an amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. For the capitalized ground lease and rehabilitation of the work. And also to authorize the entering of a memorandum of agreement, I'm sorry, memorandum of understanding. Uh, between Northrop Grumman um and the the city Housing Authority. Um, tonight, before we get to opening the uh public hearing, we would like to give you a little bit of a presentation. On the program that we are designing, um we're calling it Taking Flight Program. And so first, I'd like to ask um Director of Neighborhood Services Mike Miller to come to the front to get us started. I did wanna let you know that we also have tonight um Carol Krabson, who is the Executive Director of Valley Oasis. And we also have Ken Friend, who's the Talent Acquisition Staffing Manager for Northrop Grumman.
Sergeant.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, uh this item this evening, uh I just wanted to tee it off for uh Ms. Krabson and for Mister Friend. Before he's a a basic uh block chart that shows what we're proposing with this program in partnership with Valley Oasis and Northrop Grumman. Um, homeless veterans and other homeless individuals under this program will have the opportunity to come into this program. And actually receive an assessment through Valley Oasis, who is our regional service provider and um. To see their potential for candidates to come into this program and to actually receive vocational training and actually receive a job from Northrop Grumman. Um, so Carol will speak to this block, uh moving down through housing opportunities as part of this program. This item before you is actually the first step to offer housing to the program, as Vicky stated. And to uh tee this up to get the program started. Then transitioning to the vocational training with Northrop Grumman, the AFAB program that we hear about so much. And how they want to uh do some fast tracking for our homeless veterans and for other individuals. And then the key to it is the job placement, which is something we really haven't had a paved road to. And we're very appreciative of Northrop Grumman coming and talking with us and wanting to partner. Um, this is a very uh shoulder to shoulder process of uh Valley Oasis. And um Northrop Grumman working together to make sure that when the candidates come through the program. They're there, they have support through each phase and they find success in the workplace. Our responsibility as a housing authority will be to push the agenda of making sure we're finding housing. Uh, for these candidates and uh making sure that we get them off the street. And we get them housed and we get them teed up for success, so with that, I'd like to invite up uh Carol Krabson to come and speak from Valley Oasis. And then we'll hear from Ken Friend, we also have Pastor Mike Gonzalez, who's here this evening with Victory Outreach. They recently rehabbed the fourplex for uh their men's and women's program. And they have offered to partner up with Valley Oasis to help with the process of rehab as well. And uh keep it kind of in the family and doing good things for those people that uh were helping out in our community, so Carol.
Thanks, Mike, and uh I wanna make sure that we thank all the parties that are here that's gonna be uh providing this uh report tonight. This hasn't uh, this this just didn't happen overnight, this has taken a few months at least, a lot of meetings. We sat in these meetings trying to figure out the path, uh we decided that we had to have somebody to be able to assist Northrop. Mike and his team found the resources as far as the uh the the community partners. Uh, and we were seeing that there were all these gaps where there was a potential for someone to fall through. And we've got, we've got all these great programs, but there was, like Mike said, it needs to be shoulder to shoulder, otherwise they fall through these gaps. And I think that we've identified that and Carol will tell us how that's gonna work.
Good evening, thank you very much, so we're really excited about the Taking Flight Program. And I wanna start out by first painting a picture that it's very, very challenging for homeless individuals and especially vets. To go from being homeless into being housed, that's quite an adjustment and re- re- um structuring your entire life. And your thinking process, and from there then being trained, going to school is another adjustment, something that. If we were to go back to school, all of us would need to relearn how to learn, right? And so then also going into um, indicating a job when maybe some of them have gone many, many years. And so we've taken all of that into consideration, the the partnership is truly a co- a community effort of love. We have Valley Oasis and Pastor Mike at Victory Outreach have met, talking about what the renovation's gonna look like, our timeframe, working together. As a community utilizing community, community members to build this program from um the bricks and mortar up. We're really excited about that, so we're gonna start with doing assessments. We already identified through our coordinated entry system, veterans that are homeless and um others as well, we may not leave this at veterans. And um with that, we're gonna be bringing in Project Joy, which is a nonprofit um employment service up here in the Antelope Valley. It's a a small mom and pop agency that work tremendously well with victims of um homelessness. And other types of crimes like domestic violence, sexual assault to rebuild their lives, so they're gonna come in and do aptitude tests. So we will be looking at assessments all across the way, we're already in talks with USC to see if they would start from the ground up. To evaluate this program, to provide, to get data and to look at how we're gonna make this not only a model for our community. But a model nationwide, that's our, that's one of our goals. So, once they get into working into the AFAB program, that's um ABC and through Northrop. We are going to have intensive case management, so we can help assist them in relearning how to learn, regain study habits. So that we are building success steps, one on top of another, and catching in those places where there's a gap in services. And um then once they um are, once they graduate, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
With all the discussion we've had on this thing, you know this.
I know, I know, I know it, but um, thank you so much, I appreciate the vote of confidence. Once they um get employed, we are going to be training the supervisors out at Northrop Grumman to look for PTSD, what that looks like. We're going to have access going out there so that we can work with these employees, because we, once they get employed, we wanna keep them sustained employment. And then we're also gonna be working, of course, with HR, we're gonna be doing trainings and it will have us, will be going all the way through. Our housing, we're gonna be able to provide some rapid rehousing, we're gonna be connecting with permanent supportive housing. Utilizing already existing um partnerships that are out there in the Antelope Valley. To be able to permanently house, and then we will continue with intensive case management. For clear up to eighteen months or to two years, depending on how long the individual needs. Every, every step of this is built on community and built on success, other partners include Mental Health of America. Um, for any type of um mental health issues that um a veteran may be experiencing. Like we said, Victory Outreach, we're we're just bringing all of our partners in, this is gonna be a wonderful community. And this is a pilot program, it might start a little small, but we have great hopes that this is going to be. Something that goes from aerospace to all industry and be able to help resolve our homeless problems.
Well, I think the key was having the uh employer and having the First Sergeant here, who see, who is about as dedicated as a person can be. In uh in um repurposing these these uh these veterans' lives. And uh, so I think that uh, you know, every time we were talking about these things, there were, again, there were these. Okay, how do we solve this problem, what about the mental health problem, what about, okay, we get them into training and now they start to work. So they're gonna get kicked out of a low-income housing, now where do they go and and how do we continue to support that? So I think that 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 bringing in Valley Oasis has been really a key to making this thing work, so. I think uh First Sergeant's coming up here to follow up on that.
Lynn, take it over.
Well, the thing is that Northrop Grumman, we're we're, we are gonna provide the the jobs for the veterans. And you know, me as a a retired veteran, I can't see how we can to put the two words together, right? Homeless and veteran, in today's society, how can we put them two together knowing what they do for our country? So Northrop Grumman is stepping up to the plate and what we're gonna do is we're gonna provide them the training. Now, we do use Antelope Valley Community College right now, but our next step is to start a military university here in Palmdale. So we can. Train up our veterans and get our veterans to work, and our thought is, is that we've got a lot of veterans. Not only that are active duty, what about our reserves and our part timers, we've got to find them opportunities for. Their families to be able to support themselves, so our thought is, is that we start providing them training. Uh, through our, the Northrop Grumman University, not only for the veteran, but also their spouse. Because they've gotta have dual i- in our society today, the way that the economy is growing and the housing is going up, they've gotta be able to afford that housing. So we're gonna offer them training for both the the spouse and um the service member. The placement of the jobs, they are gonna start off at an entry level, cause we're gonna start them off. But the thing is, is that we have already hired five homeless veterans um at Northrop Grumman through our program that we got right now. The thing, the the part that we're lacking is this community that we're putting together. And I call it a community because this needs to be a community effort, it cannot be a Northrop Grumman effort, it can't be their effort. Our whole community needs to pull together to help out the homeless veteran, not only the homeless veterans, but homeless altogether, right? We've gotta try to find a way to do this, it is a pilot, the program for Northrop Grumman here, we're gonna start it off here. If we have success here, we wanna grow it and move it into other areas, right? So, this could be a start of a great thing and Palmdale could be the start of this program that we're putting together.
Well, I think certainly, the Northrop setting the standard here and with the, with the, uh I know that um. Northrop has had uh exceptionally uh good uh response from the veteran community, that they make great employees out there. And I know, know a few, uh and I also know the challenges that you faced when you were trying to bring the homeless guys in and. You didn't have the expertise to deal with those issues.
No.
We didn't, uh, the Work Source Center didn't, so we had, we had to be able to find those, how do we fill those gaps? And I think that by bringing in the other resources here, I think that that's been the key, because every meeting we had, we just kept, but who's gonna handle this? Well, we gotta figure that one out, so I I think, I think we're we're getting there and I'm gonna challenge other employers to start looking at this model. Because it can't just be Northrop.
Absolutely.
And let me just say, first of all, Northrop is near and dear to my heart, um I'm a former Northrop employee, I worked on the B two bomber project, ships one through four. Um, but I wanna thank you for including the military spouses, my ex-husband was a marine. And spouses travel wherever their husbands go or their spouse goes, that means that we, it's it's difficult to hold a job. Um, to get any kind of a foothold into employment, because you're always starting over or to finish your education. And so spouses pay a really high price for being married to the military, so I personally wanna thank you for that, it's very, very important, thank you.
Thank you, so for our um our housing aspect of it, um this is a four-unit uh property. That the Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale currently owns in Focus Neighborhood Three, that we wanna be able to. Enter into an agreement and be able to lease to Valley Oasis, um to then be able to rehab the property and be able to house homeless veterans for this program. So tonight, um just to reassess or come back to our item, we are requesting um permission to open a public hearing. Um, to receive uh public comment on the affordable housing agreement between the Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale and Valley Oasis. Um, also requesting adoption of resolution HA uh twenty twenty dash zero zero one. Authorizing the affordable housing agreement between the uh Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale and Valley Oasis. The lease of the Housing Authority property located at five oh seven East Avenue Q four. As well as the Housing Authority loan not to exceed seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for a capitalized ground lease and rehab of the property. As well as authorize us to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Northrop Grumman to employ homeless veterans.
So uh, was that the introduction of the uh, do we need to introduce an ordinance or anything on this? Or just open a public hearing now? We got a room full of attorneys.
Public hearings.
There's a chair to open public hearings, so.
Alright, okay, um, anybody wanna testify in this item?
Here comes Marcia. You know I love you, Marcia.
My name is Marcia Furman, I am a veteran, I very much like this program, but anything that helps veterans. I have been very helped out through the state and the city. out through the state and the city and, and I appreciate it. I also was a spouse of a military and I know to this day, I struggle with an occupation um to try to live because I didn't have the opportunity to uh have steady job all those years. My question is, and only because I kinda hang around a lot and sometimes I try to retrain, re- remember some things, that I'm going to the high-speed rail, okay? Because I believe the location could be moved down south of the transportation center is where the, when it comes through, the whole high-speed rail new terminal is going to be. And I thought the city had said, or the high-speed rail said, the first phase of the development when this happens will move out from Sierra Highway or that new location of the terminal out to Fifth Street um east would be the first phase of redevelopment. So of course, I'm just looking at the map, thinking, is this project? Of course, it's not right now, and maybe not next year or the year after. But right now, it's still in the works. It's still coming. Something's coming. Something's coming. Vegas or Victorville or something's coming. And it's gonna be redeveloped, if still in that area on Sixth Street, down from the transportation center, and we will move out. Cause I live in that many phases out. Uh, but I, I thought I heard Fifth Street. So that's, my only question is, is this project with these homes, I don't know.
Fifth, Fifth East and Q four.
Right. I don't know if they're meant to be there for the next five years, ten years, one year in relation to this possible development coming. You know, how much is gonna be invested? That's, that's my only question is how those two are meshing together. That's all.
We'll find out for you, Marcia. Thank you.
Housing, wanna respond to that? Mike, somebody?
You bet. As Ms. Furman stated, the Housing Authority does own quite a few assets in that area. Um, one of our partners is Youth Build, um with the Dream Center and some properties that they have built. Um, we have owned these properties for a number of years, and this property is sitting vacant, and we might as well put it to use. Um, the Housing Authority, Sophia and her team, we're already doing a long-term analysis of the values of those properties and how we will preserve programs. We just may move where that housing is when um this comes through. And to remember that our community partners and these properties are no different than when relocation is offered for a large development. And um I can just say, our recommendation would be to the Housing Authority to continue those partnerships, take the assets, move them, and continue on. Um, I honestly believe this program, if it gets the synergy from the community and all of our partners, uh will quickly outgrow that four-plex and be looking at other things in the future as well.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, do we know and we'll hear a response from USC?
Uh Carol, did you wanna speak to USC?
Thank you. I've been in, in discussion with one of the head researchers at USC. They're um having chats about it, and then they will be getting back to us. I'm supposed to be speaking with them by Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we got a couple of guys that have
We have connections.
Know some people over there, so.
We have some people.
Make any calls, let us know. So. So that's about, it's about, it's all about the discussion and building those relationships, so. Anybody else on this item would like to uh testify or?
Hi, I'm Heather Varden. I've worked with the homeless community in this area for a very long time, and I'm really excited for this project. Um, Supportive Services have been really successful in not only housing people, but keeping them housed. And adding this piece of employment, I think, is a really good thing for this. So I think it's a really sustainable project.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was part of the discussion as well is, we, we go out and First Sergeant goes out and recruits them, and then he's put them in the school, and then they gotta go live in their car in a parking lot. So it didn't seem like that was gonna work, so. Uh, great. Anybody else?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Juan Blanco, and I am president of Coffee for Vets. Coffee for Vets is a organization started many, many years ago. We meet every Tuesday morning at Crazy Islands on Avenue I, and we have been advocating. We are actually a center point of contact. We develop from just camaraderie to a center point of contact where most of the people who are speaking before you tonight have come and met with veterans. And just this morning, uh, Michelle Smith from Mental Health uh America, Military Resource Center, was working with a homeless vet uh for quite some time, and when she came back into the room, I asked her about that veteran. She said, "Well, I'm doing what I can, but he doesn't have a home. He doesn't have a phone. I don't know if I'll ever see him again." So I'm at this podium to speak in favor, total favor, and I'm encouraging you, the Commissioners, to vote yes on this because we need this program for our veterans who have served this nation and have fallen on hard times and are living in the cold. It's thirty-seven degrees outside. So can we expedite this project and get it off the ground? Because Palmdale is leading this valley. Let's keep moving. And homelessness for veterans is a critically important issue. It's top of my list, and I will continue to support you. And veterans who come to Coffee for Vets will support you in this, in this endeavor. So please consider yes on this project because they have worked very hard to make this happen. And whatever we can do to show the rest of the world that we care is very important. So I wanna thank you all and uh.
Thank you, sir. So just so you know, we started having these discussions during the holidays, and all those people sitting in that row there with Mike and, and the other guys there were coming in over Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, coming in on the days off, coming in and, and working on this stuff over the weekends and stuff because this was such a high priority. And I think um Mr. Murphy was given very clear direction, we need to make this happen and happen now. And uh, and all of us were, were in there on this thing. So, Mr. Murphy.
That's what I was gonna comment on. Uh, oftentimes, we're criticizing government for being slow to move, and uh I don't think the uh elected officials are giving themselves credit. They were in the, you know, some of you were in the initial meetings, and within sixty days of the first meeting, here we are to come up with a plan to bring the experts, because we didn't have all the answers in that room, but we brought the people in. And kudos to staff who identified the partners that they've worked with. And I, and I understand that this may be an opportunity in the future, that it, it's a property that may be relocated, but now's the time to act. It's a call to action now. We have a property and we have a need. Three years from now, four years from now, we can relocate that. But we're gonna spend the same amount of money to go build something or buy something where we have great partners, if approved, can rehab it, and we can own our piece of the puzzle to make this project happen. So I thank you for allowing us to be so aggressive in the timeline. And Palmdale is leading the way in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, after that, anybody have any questions? Alright, do I have a motion or any comments from the uh, from the council and the commission?
I guess the first thing is to move to adopt the Resolution HA twenty twenty dash zero zero one, authorizing an affordable housing agreement between the Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale and Valley Oasis, the lease of Housing Authority property, APN three zero zero eight dash zero one three dash nine oh three, five oh seven East Avenue Q four. A Housing Authority loan in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the capitalized ground lease and rehabilitation of the property. Authorized under a memorandum of understanding with Northrop Grumman to employ homeless veterans and direct the executive director or his designees to execute all necessary documents and take all necessary actions to implement the approved actions. And so I make that motion.
I second it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. I don't, I don't know that.
Voice vote.
Gotta be a voice vote, okay?
Yes.
Alright, and are they commenting on the spouse? There's a topic that we're talking about with uh, with the state and when I was back in DC. So the spousal licenses and employment thing is very high on everybody's list. We're working on it. One step here. Let's get him, let's get somebody out of the car.
As a military widow, I am so proud of this program.
Good job, Seth.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing done. So ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. This is groundbreaking. So do we, do we need to do a motion to close public hearing? Motion to close public hearing on this item?
I'll make, I'll make second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So ordered. Okay, alright, so. We were, city attorney was over there. We were on supervisor for a moment, so.
Bye-bye.
Alright, thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was an important, that was an important item. Okay. So we will, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and adjourn the, the Housing Authority meeting. We still uh, still gotta move on here. If you wanna have some additional conversation on this item, uh vestibule is warm. So, it's warmer than it is outside. We'll give them a minute, guys. I think we got some people that were here for that item. I think they're gonna take off. I think they're, I think they're having, I think there's, I think they're having trouble tonight. Okay, yeah, but I don't know. I think it's just recording. I don't know if it's broadcasting right now. Okay, so if we could uh, can we make sure we get that door pulled closed here so we can avoid the distraction while we go ahead and continue? Alright, okay. Item number twenty, we adjourn the Housing Authority meeting. Item number twenty-one, public hearing, twenty-one point one.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Staff is requesting a public hearing to provide interested citizens with the opportunity to express their views concerning the citizen participation plan and consider and approve the draft citizen participation plan. Authorize the city manager or his designee to incorporate the public comments into the plan and submit to HUD for approval. Uh, the citizen participation plan is an integral part of the consolidated plan, and we have to update it every five years. There was a notice published in the AV Press on January second inviting citizens interested in expressing their views to come and uh express their views tonight during this public hearing. And so we are requesting that public hearing and uh set approvals in the staff report.
Excellent. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open a public hearing and receive testimony. Anybody wishing to testify in this item, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Marcia Furman. The only question I have, just for the comment that was just made, that it was published in the Valley Press concerning coming here to speak about this issue, I wonder what percentage of the population of Palmdale reads the Valley Press these days. Thank you.
Yep, well, I think we also put it on the website, correct?
That's a good point. It, it's also published on the website uh and posted around City Hall, the library, and other locations.
Okay, so that's not the only resource, but
That's correct.
Charter requirement, do we have to publish it in the local newspaper?
Actually, this very document uh guides where we need to publish that document. Um, or any notice for public participation in regard to HUD federal funding. Um, and so it is uh out here on the, the doors. Um, it's at the uh City Hall, it's in Community Programs, it's in the library, it's on the website, and we also publish in the paper.
So it is one step above putting it on a castle door, so. I know, I know.
That's true. Thank you for clarifying.
Yep. So I had a feeling that it was in just more than that spot. Okay, uh anybody else on this item? Alright, I need a motion to close a public hearing then, seeing no, no other testimony. Oh, are you coming up, ma'am? No.
Move to close a public hearing.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know. It's a movement. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing done. So ordered. Okay, the staff recommendation is to move and approve the recommendations and findings as listed in the staff report. Do we have a motion or any other comment from the council?
So moved.
Okay. Did you push?
Start voting.
Machinery. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Item twenty-one point two, public hearing to hear public comments on the cancellation of the twenty sixteen seventeen SAVES facility acquisition activity and reprogram funds to the new twenty nineteen, twenty twenty spotlight acquisition and, and demolition activity. And to authorize the city manager or designee to sign all documents necessary and to amend such action plans and obtain HUD approval. Staff.
Yes, that is the item that we are requesting, uh public hearing to do all of those actions and to um receive public comment uh from any resident who would want to comment. Uh, City Council approved the twenty sixteen seventeen action plan of May twenty sixteen and the city's twenty nineteen through twenty twenty action plan in May twenty nineteen. Um, the city has identified that the SAVES facility acquisition activity is no longer viable and shall be canceled. And in place, um we are requesting a new CDBG activity. Uh, be created the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty spotlight acquisition and demolition and allow the city to acquire and demolish the vacant and unsightly building as outlined in the staff report.
So in common terms, what you're trying to say is the building we had burned down, and now we have to clear the lot?
Actually, this is the property adjacent to that property. Um, and uh it's a little bit of a CDBG uh formality uh in terms of administration. Uh, the ac- action plan identified the activity as a SAVES facility acquisition. And due to the adjacent property burning, it is no longer uh targeted to be a SAVES facility. Uh, the plan for the, the development of that property is still unknown. Um, but this uh cancellation of, of that uh activity and the creation of the new activity will allow the city to continue moving forward.
Okay.
And uh be open to whatever is next.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So uh do we get any public comments uh prior to the meeting tonight on this item?
I have not received any public comments.
Okay, anybody wish to testify in this item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? So ordered. Staff recommendation is to uh move and approve the recommendations and findings as listed in the staff report. Any comments from the council or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion. And the machine is not showing a second yet. There it is.
Start voting.
There we go. I can only talk so slow to keep pace with this machine. Shows five zero on that item. Thank you very much. I'd create some additional flexibility. Okay, you're gonna read this one.
Great, thank you. The item before you um is a um staff is requesting a public hearing to hear public comments on the programming of unused prior year CDBG funding to the new twenty nineteen through twenty twenty Juniper Grove acquisition activity, to program the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty multifamily new construction home funds to Juniper Grove, and to authorize the city manager or his designee to do the following. Sign all documents necessary to amend set action plans and obtain HUD approval. Sign the preliminary award letter for home funds for Juniper Grove activity and make nonsubstantive changes as approved by the city attorney and to negotiate and prepare loan agreements for the CDBG and home funds in a form approved by the city attorney for Juniper Grove activity.
Alright, so we're gonna open a public hearing and receive testimony on this item. Uh, did you have any public comment on this one prior to this?
I have not received public comment on this item.
Anybody in the audience wish to comment on this item? Okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion so carries. Um, the staff recommendation is to approve the recommendations and findings as listed in the staff report. Any additional council comments or questions on this item? I have a motion by
Second.
Okay, and a second. Can we get the phone silenced, please? Thank you.
Start voting.
I think it's you.
It's not me.
Not me.
Did you show the votes registered there? Did you show the votes registered there?
Yes, the vote already registered.
Okay, I didn't see, did it come up on the screen and I missed it when I was distracted by the ringing phone? Okay, that's why we ask you to turn the phones off there, folks.
It's smart, it sounds good.
Helps, okay. All right, uh.
Thank you.
What was it? Oh, sure. Who did that? Who did that? I. It's not me. No, it's the, uh, why does it say Austin Bishop? Sure. Guilty as charged. All right.
Can't make this up.
No, I was, I think I was, I leaned down my key thing and, uh, I have one of those title devices on there and it makes it ring, like, if I lose my phone.
Excuses.
All right, hey, when you get old, you'll need a, you'll need a tether on your keys too, so. All right, twenty-two, new business. Mister, Mister Murphy.
Mayor, uh, late last year. We had Javier and his group made a presentation, made a request and council directed us to come back here in February to, uh, start the conversation, to start the conversation on, uh, alcohol use, land ideas, uh, staff's gonna make a presentation and then Javier and his group will make a, uh, some comments after that. I will, I will say, uh, we may or may not be able to get their PowerPoint to work, so I would just ask for flexibility, uh, with time on his presentation, just in case the, uh, presentation doesn't load.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, um, as the city manager said, this is an item to discuss the alcohol, uh, beverage establishments and the ordinance regarding, uh, their placement in the community. I have a quick little slideshow to kinda go over the entitlement process, um, and then I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have. So to start with, I wanted to go over the purpose and intent of the alcohol ordinance and as stated in the municipal code, um, the purpose is to establish specific standards for alcoholic beverage establishments to ensure that such businesses are appropriately located and operated so as not to pose a significant threat to the public health, safety, peace and welfare. Um, so, keep that little, the, the bold language in mind as we roll through these slides, because it's gonna be important here pretty soon. All right, so currently, all new, uh, alcohol uses require a conditional use permit. This is the, the exact language in the municipal code, no new alcoholic beverage establishment shall be established unless a permit has been obtained. That's a liquor store. Um, so, to refresh, to obtain a conditional use permit, there are certain findings that the city needs to make to approve one. Uh, one is that the proposed use is consistent with the goals, policies and objectives of the general plan. The proposed use is beneficial and desirous to the community. The site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate all the yards, open spaces, setbacks, walls, et cetera. The proposed use and the ongoing operation of the use will not have a substantial adverse impact on abutting property. Um, and the permit of the use will not generate excessive noise, vibration, traffic or other disturbances, nuisances or hazards. And that the site for the proposed use has adequate access. So with regard to citing a alcoholic beverage establishment, there's an additional finding that the city needs to make to, to cite it. Here it is, so in addition to the findings required in article twenty-two, which we just went over, um, the approval, approval authority shall find that the proposed use is consistent with the purpose of section nine two point zero seven. And so that was, the purpose is what we went over at the beginning of the slideshow presentation. And it's conveniently located at the bottom of this slide. Uh, and the purpose is to ensure that such establishments are appropriately located and operated so as not to pose a significant threat to the public health, safety, peace and welfare. Are there any questions so far? All right. The municipal code also says that in making the required findings for the conditional use permit, the approval authority may, not required, but may, consider the following. Whether the proposed establishment would result in an over intensification of alcoholic beverage establishments. Whether the proposed establishment would be located in a high crime area. Information in the surrounding area and regarding the surrounding area. And the hours of operation of the proposed establishment. All right, so what does over intensification mean? The municipal code provides for two different methods of identifying over intensification, the first one is the population density method. And this uses a ratio of the resident population to permitted alcohol beverage establishments. So, we compare the ratio in a particular census tract of the population to the number of establishments and we compare it to the citywide ratio. All right, um, you know, there, there are some problems with this, with this method, um, certainly we have, we're a large city, um, it's not developed in the same way across the city. In fact, it's not developed in some places at all, so each census tract may be, may be different. Um, so there's an alternative method, which is called the retail density method. Um, and what that does is it compares the number of alcoholic beverage establishments within two hundred fifty, two thousand five hundred feet of the location where the alcoholic beverage establishment is gonna go in. Um, and then it compares that with, um, an average of twenty randomly selected alcoholic beverage establishments from the city's commercially zoned areas. And so this gives you, um, a picture of, of how many, how many alcohol, alcohol outlets in developed areas there are compared to where this, uh, proposed new establishment is gonna go in. All right, the other factor that the city may consider is whether or not the location is in a high crime area. So high crime shall mean a crime reporting district that has more than one hundred and twenty percent of the average crimes reported in the city of Palm Dale. Hopefully pretty self-explanatory.
I understand it.
I know you do. All right, um, so, so in addition, there are location standards, uh, with regard to placing, uh, alcohol uses. Um, and they're different for bona fide restaurants and, uh, primary alcoholic beverage establishments. The location standards do not apply to alcoholic beverage establishments that are placed in the C four zone or the Palm Dale Trade and Commerce Center specific plan. And the thought is, is, you know, these are the entertainment areas, these are where we wanna place the alcohol outlets. Um, so we're anticipating that there's going to be a certain amount of density in those areas. All right, here are, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but this is a, a, a list of the distance required uh, from certain uses such as churches, schools, other outlets, and this is for, uh, primary alcohol outlets. And then there's also distance separation requirements for bona fide restaurants and incidental alcohol beverage establishments. All right. There is an opportunity to request a modification from those standards, so let's say, uh, there's an applicant who's wishing to place an alcoholic beverage establishment that's within one of these prohibited distance requirements. There's an opportunity for them to modify, uh, those location standards, uh, if there are certain findings made by the planning commission or if it's appealed to the city council. And there's additional require, additional findings that are required to get that modification. And those are, it will serve a specific dan- demand, not currently served within one quarter mile of the project location. It will not adversely affect nearby property. It will not encourage the development of adult entertainment area or otherwise promote community blame. All right, so what is a specific demand not currently served? That means an alcoholic beverage establishment where more than fifty percent of the alcoholic beverages, uh, that are going to be sold at that location are not available, uh, within one quarter mile of the location. So what we're talking about here would be, um, like a wine store that, uh, specializes in imported wines or a craft beer store. Or, this establishment. What, what we're trying to accomplish here is, uh, if we're gonna relax those standards, we wanna make sure that we're, we're getting an outlet that's gonna provide something that's not already available in the community. All right, um, there are conditions that are placed through the conditional use, uh, um, process. Uh, those apply to conditional use permits, um, the planning commission, there's kinda some standard uh, conditions that staff applies to, to all outlets. Um, the planning commission, based on its location, can also, uh, impose additional conditions to try to, you know, lessen the impact of that use on the surrounding neighborhood. In addition, uh, about five years ago, there were some changes made to the alcohol ordinance, um, and there was what's called a deemed approved uh, ordinance, and there were several established alcohol outlets that were approved prior to the conditional use permit requirement. Um, and what the deemed approved ordinance did was say, okay, we understand that those aren't subject to conditional use permits, but they, those outlets still have to comply with a set of standard conditions that are outlined in the municipal code and those deal with, um, signage, uh, display of alcoholic beverages. Um, if it's on sale, you can't drink it offsite, if it's off sale, you can't drink it onsite. Um, so it's just some, some standard conditions that are gonna be applicable to all alcohol outlets across the city. One of those and is the responsible beverage service training, uh, and that's to require a, a training program that, that teaches methods and, and skill for selling alcoholic beverages such as, you know, not selling to minors, uh, not selling to people that appear to be intoxicated. Stuff like that, um, this was something that was implemented in the city a while back. Uh, the, this state has recently adopted legislation that, that's gonna require that, um, so the, the city was ahead of the game on that one. Um, in addition, there's compliance review, with all conditional use permits, there's, there's an opportunity, uh, if the city determines that the establishment is not complying with the conditions or the standard, uh, conditions that are applicable across the board uh, to, to revoke the use or to add additional conditions onto that use to ensure that it doesn't impact the community. You can do that either through the conditional use permit process or if it's a deemed approved establishment, um, there's a process to require them to apply and get a conditional use permit. I know there was some, some, a request, uh, at the, I believe it was a December meeting, um, for some, some crime stats. Uh, this slide is the crime rate, part one crime rate for the last five years. Um, I wanna thank Captain Ron for the continual and steep decrease in our crime rate. Uh, great job, uh, on the right-hand side is the number of outlets and why they vary as some, some outlets go out of business and some outlets go into business. Um, the number kinda fluctuates, but as you can see, there's a general trend of more outlets in the community than there were a couple of years ago. So, and at this time, I'm, I'm available for any questions.
I, I just have a question. Suppose you give a conditional use permit, what, what is our ability to limit the hours that they can sell alcohol? And, and here's the reason I'm asking, um, this actually occurred today, with, either today or yesterday, I can't remember. A school was getting out and it was off of thirty-fifth street and somebody was leaving a liquor store north of Palm Dale Boulevard and they're walking with a twenty-four pack, um, it was very heavy and they were having a little trouble carrying it. And they're walking down thirty-fifth street and then school gets out and you've got all these elementary school kids walking with the guy with the twenty-four pack, it just looked really weird.
Right.
Can we limit when they sell alcohol, like, not, like, around school times?
Yeah, I mean, the short answer is yes, and and, uh, generally speaking, there will be restrictions on our hours of operation in the conditional use permit. It, it's, it's generally a cutoff in the evening.
Yeah, I knew that.
You can't be open after a certain period of time.
Right, I knew that.
Um, I, I'm not aware of a condition that prohibits the sale during.
I mean, there's probably nothing wrong with it, it just looks pretty bad.
You know, two to four.
Here's all these little kids and this guy lugging a twenty-four pack, walking down the street and all the kids are trying to go around him, it just looked really bad. I don't know, image can mean a lot to people and.
Right.
Parents are seeing this and they're like, what the hell? So.
Clearly, the goal is when we develop, we wanna make sure that the distance between liquor stores or outlets and schools and churches and things of that nature is far apart as, as possible. Uh, I see what you're saying, I think it's just gonna be hard to limit what a store does in certain hours.
Yeah.
Right, and that's a good point, and I'm, I'm rewinding here. To the, to the distances? To, yeah, and so here, here the distance, so, so. This one? So for bona fide restaurants, there's, there's a distance requirement for on sale of five hundred feet. For primary outlets, uh, schools, uh, on sale would be five hundred and then off sale would be a thousand. So for like your, your liquor store where you're buying beer to go, it'd be a thousand feet. So the guy with the twenty-four pack hopefully is a thousand feet away from the school when he begins his travels.
I, I might check that, but.
I think.
Might have been, might have been raped as well.
In that case, the liquor store was already established.
Oh yeah, the liquor store was definitely never, it was.
Yeah, we, we do have an issue where we have established alcohol outlets in commercial areas and then schools that aren't in your traditional public school setting go into like a strip mall and it's like an alternative learning.
No, this was, this was actually over there off of thirty-fifth street by the TPAA and then the Palm Dale School District School was right there too, so there was a lot of kids.
Right.
And I don't know that this guy was in a good way, cause he was really struggling to carry this twenty-four pack, it, it was bad, it looked terrible. So, I don't know. It just made me uncomfortable.
Should I like to ask a question, Mike? Come on down. So I know that we've, um, we've, uh, applied for, we've received some grants on our tobacco enforcement and things of that nature. And that we're regularly checking for improper sales and things like that. What is our enforcement, um, mechanism? Cause that's kinda been the biggest complaint that I get from people is that we, we have very robust discussion about our conditional use permits, planning commission and the council and our infinite wisdom establishes changes of hours or, or says, you know, you have to do something a different way and then who follows up on it, you know, and, uh, uh, so that, um, uh, at one point, we had a commercial code enforcement officer whose responsibility was to go around and make sure that the CUPs were posted, the CUP requirements were, were being abided by, uh, by the different establishments and things like that. Is there a mechanism like that in place now, other than when we get the periodic sheriff buy programs, I think they're the ones that get the grants on that?
Um, well, to speak to tobacco, the staff, uh, just went out and visited twenty-two sites this week. And it was very successful, um, people are in compliance and, uh, they're, they're embracing, you know, uh, what we're asking them to do as far as single sale.
Right.
Uh, underage sales, those types of things. To alcohol, uh, the code enforcement team, um, and I, I do wanna say thank you to Javier and his team. Uh, we attended a presentation, uh, probably about a year ago or so and, uh, we went back as a team and, and spoke and we.
And we went back as a team and and spoke and we sent out letters to all of our outlets. And let them know to be aware of our municipal code. And to make sure that we're in compliance. And one of those areas where we're finding voluntary compliance right now. Is in the window coverings at the different stores. There's a requirement that you can't cover it more than twenty five percent. And we know that many of those have been covered for many years. And then also going with the single sale. Selling single sale alcohol that's over the the maximum alcohol content. So we are starting to work with that. The team's working together and we'll be spot checking those. I've been out and spot checking a couple of stores and actually people have taken the product off. Of the shelves. Some retailers have been calling and really questioning, do you guys really mean this in the letter? And staff's been saying, yeah, but we're not gonna come out there. And club people. We want you to to get compliant in that area. So we are working as a team. We're we wanna coach. And bring people into compliance. And I do wanna give credit to Javier and the information that he did he did share. From a public safety standpoint that we do look at. We look at our crime numbers and that's truly what it is. A city nationwide standard is if you're below three hundred part one crimes. You're considered a safe city. So here recently, our city manager was able to inform the council that we landed at. One eighty two point six, which isn't too bad. So and our our partnership with the sheriff's department is invaluable. Our partnership with the community is the same way. And looking at this item and speaking with the city attorney's office, we sat and looked at the three different zip codes within the community. To see how does it really compare? And it pretty much fell in line with what we understand. Is is that for nine three five five one, the area that has. The west side and the mall and those areas, the crime hasn't really changed for the past couple of years. It's trending right at about one seventy eight, hundred and seventy part one crimes for the past couple of years. In that area of nine three five five one, it has the highest concentration of alcohol outlets. When you look over to nine three five five two, has the lowest number of outlets, fourteen. But their crime number sat last year at a hundred and twenty eight part one crimes. When you look at nine three five five zero, which is the highest concentration of population. So about seventy one thousand people. And when we look at that, for this past year, nine three five five zero rested right at about a hundred and ninety part one crimes. Per ten thousand people. So here a couple of years ago, we were very excited is. Noel put up on the board to see where our crime numbers had dropped to. Several years ago, we were very excited to get under two hundred as a community. But when you look at our zip code areas, we're doing very well. And and actually nine three five five zero has a lower number of outlets than nine three five five one. But not stopping there this past year and talking with Captain Schaefer. We still look at the detail of our crime numbers and one thing that Captain Schaefer has. Admonished us is to look at how can we get out into our community and talk with our residents about maybe getting along a little bit better. So we look at the domestic calls that our deputies receive. And the captain can speak to this if he wants to talk a little more, but we find that we're going back out to these families multiple times. They just don't get along. And these calls do drive up that sector of the number. So the one thing that the captain is taking the initiative to work with. Valley Oasis, Carol Crapson, who is here tonight. And they're partnering and finding out how we can reach out into the nine three five five zero area. And start reaching out to families where we have these trends for numbers of calls.
That alcohol is frequently involved in those domestics and things of that nature?
I would have to, yeah. Because his his team is there at the doorway.
Good evening, Ron Schaefer. We do have a component of our reporting as we wanna track alcohol involved. And there's a spattering of it and like Mr. Miller said. We are reaching out with our community partners to help couples, families learn how to get along with each other. There's a lot of other mitigating factors that come into the domestic violence. It is a challenge for us as we move forward. But there are a lot of organizations out there that are helping us.
I have a question for Mike and maybe you too. In speaking of enforcement, to to what level is ABC coordinating or helping in the partnership in enforcing? These laws. Cause I understand that ABC also has an enforcement unit. It may not be as. As useful because of the amount of outlets throughout the state. But is there is there some collaboration with ABC as far as enforcing violations?
I'm not aware of what they do in our community. They're not communicating with me before they come out and do their business.
So how do they, how would they?
That be based on cafe cards or something like that, Cap?
That, I'm not sure. Again, I I'm not aware of what they do or how much they're spending their time out here. They're servicing all of LA County.
With both guys, something like that.
Yeah, I think that there was two and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong even more than I do. The investigators will come out if a complaint has been made and they will investigate at that point. Also. We do send them reports within a half mile of certain locations that have ABC licenses. So they they are up here once in a while, but they they don't do targeted enforcement. They have to be called to come out, so unless you know something different, Mike.
No, other than in the past, we've utilized the shoulder tap program. And and we'll we'll make a request when we see an issue there and we've we've had some success. But it's just been very interesting to see what's really going on as a trend across the city. And and to see where our crime numbers are going and this is an opportunity that we're focused on. In part of the captain's strategic plan that that we're getting behind and really pushing is to get out and to get with our families. And try and help them with the services.
I I can tell you just and you could probably back part of this up is is that. I know that thirty nine years on the street, we we tended to, there were certain establishments. And certain types of establishments that we tended to have to roll up on because somebody got their head busted or there was a. Alcohol induced violence that that would have occurred. Doesn't tend to be at the dinner houses and things of this nature, you know, tended to be more like so some of the the. The package sales places and things of this nature. So but what what I would, the thing that just troubles me is is that. Several years ago, we were on a proactive approach on all CUPs. And if we started to see a trend someplace, we'd be proactive on that. And then when we had a downturn. In the economy and we got rid of the commercial code enforcement officer, all that went away. Now we got a grant on tobacco and you guys are doing outstanding work and I'll tell you what, I've gotten communities where. Where the council members are calling me going, how did you guys do that? We know this attorney general personally and you guys got a much bigger grant than we did. And the well, the need is there and our people are being effective. I'd like to be able to see us be able to do more proactive. You know, checking on this stuff as opposed to waiting till something becomes a problem. Cause the handful of CUPs we have taken action on and it's been something that's blown up and now we gotta stack complaints as thick. And then we find out it's been going on for three years. That's not fair to the operator. It's not fair to the community. It's not, you know, it's not it's not fair to anybody that. You know, why are you picking on me now, you know, type of a thing. And yeah, we can justify it, but. Maybe there's a better way to approach that and I'd like to be able to see us do. Yeah, I don't know if anybody else thinks that's a good idea, but I think getting out there, we've got the letters going out. We've we've told them, this is what we're gonna expect. I think there needs to, you know, be that follow up now to see. Did they take it to heart? And if they didn't, now provide some additional motivation in a written format for them, okay?
And we will do that, Mayor. And again, when we look at the analytics, we sit with the captain every month. We're communicating with him and the staff. We don't see there's a dire trend based on our crime numbers right now, but that doesn't mean we're stopping there. We are trying to to again, get with the station's strategic plan to be more engaged with the community. And then also to taking the compliance side of it. So those are the two arms that are reaching around this this year as part of our goal.
I think one of the areas that I think all of us have struggled with has been. The issue of, do we want more convenience stores up and down Palmdale Boulevard? Residents complain, how can we not get in a nicer store? You know, we can't regulate the name on the door. It's about who you're gonna, who you're going to do business with and. And and the operator's gonna make those decisions. But I would like to be able to see us, cause I think that when we we stop and take a look at. At again, some of the areas where we have problems that tend to be. Directly or anecdotally connected, tend to be towards those types of establishments, the convenience stores. And I'm not trying to demonize anyone. I'm just thinking that it is what it is. Is there a way that we can be looking at that? Maybe this is a more of a question for the attorney. Where we can make that adjustment within our. Either within our planning process, because I think what we wanna be careful of, we don't wanna stop. Bonds from coming in. We don't wanna stop all these. We don't wanna stop Trader Joe's from coming in. Everybody wants that store, but these stores look at these things. We don't wanna stop the Dave and Buster's from showing up. We don't wanna stop the a new Cinemark or some of these other things from showing up here. But that's, I don't know that we're having problems with within those environments. So is there a way we can better target what we want from from a crime prevention? Aesthetics and quality of life product in our city?
Well, can I just jump in here real fast? So I'm kind of a numbers person with this. I wanna use caution when we say that we we wanna do these analytics because numbers don't always tell a complete story. We don't wanna discourage businesses from calling for for police when they need service because they know that they're gonna incur a fine or they're gonna face. Some type of a problem later down the road. When the new CPUs are are given or new businesses coming in, we do calls for service at a location. We review things frequently to see how many calls for service they're having each year. We don't want a business to go, oh no, don't call the police. Because now I'm gonna have another call for service. We want accurate data and and by targeting certain locations. That's gonna discourage people from calling for help when they really need it. And from a public safety perspective, we need people calling. To address problems on scene when it happens, not not worrying about what's gonna happen to them if they make that call.
That's a great point, because I think that by knowing that there's a problem, maybe there's something that our staff can work with them on. We were having that at 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 a particular restaurant. We're starting to get a lot of calls for service. They went over there, they sat down, they got the corporate people in there. They say, hey, okay, maybe there's something you're not paying attention to if something's spilling out into the parking lot here, you know? So and I think that I think that we've asked that question in the past is, are these things that? They has been instigated by some. Some somebody not paying attention at the establishment, are these good faith calls? Where they're trying, they had a troublemaker show up and they're trying to deal with it versus a problem that was clearly as a result of. Them just being a bad actor and 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 now it's there. So I think there's. I think there's gotta be a way to 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 look at that, you know? I I think a lot of that has to do with the way that the deputy makes that report, you know, so this is our discussion, okay? I I think that the the deputies, that that could be reflected in that. You don't wanna adversely impact somebody.
Deputies are really good about bringing the information back into the building. Like I do attend briefings and I do talk to patrol. And they will talk to our detective bureau, they'll talk to our operations staff, or they'll talk to their crime analysis unit and say, hey. We we've been out there a lot, you know, what do you think's going on or what can we do? So there there is not a big disconnect between patrol and everyone else. They do bring that information in. The deputies are very good about that. So they make us aware.
So the the area that is being talked about is nine three five five oh. So I'm wondering if there are any ways to provide resources to that area, like a counseling office? A parenting service, something that the residents would be willing to attend. So that that education can be part of the problem. Because we're talking about nine three five five oh and the numbers that you gave us, Mike, the the number one crimes related to to that area. Maybe there's a way to provide those resources, educational resources and parenting.
All of the the neighborhood houses are over in that area right now, Mike.
We have some counseling services out there too.
That's what the captain is currently doing with Valley Oasis right now. They're preparing to do that. So when a deputy does go out to a household. They can offer something and help that family out. And that's really what we want at the end of the day. We just don't wanna go log calls. We wanna make sure that we're being effective, being good coaches in the community and so. And there are ways too that we can we can sponsor different meetings at the neighborhood houses. And here in the civic center area, but this is one step that. Valley Oasis is very excited about and will be another great tool for our deputies to have. And again, our community embraces our deputies very well. It's obvious over the past few years, the great job that they've done. To when the rest of the nation is going sideways about their law enforcement and their community and our community, these past years, our residents have embraced them. So we wanna continue to build that bridge and help those families and we can certainly do that and we can speak to the city manager. And find a path that we can help to do that.
So Mr. Corio had said. Probably a little bit more broadly than I had suggested as far as now the follow up with the enforcement side. He also talked about the therapeutic side and the counseling side. I'm I'm with that a hundred percent. I think that if we, you know, find where the, where where's the problem, okay? And is there a problem? I think that's what we gotta look at. I think that we've seen a lot of stats in the past that show. The more alcohol facilities there are, you have you have some escalating crime numbers that go up. Now the the question is is that. How, I mean, and that tends to be fairly consistent, no matter what community you're in, those numbers tend to grow. The question is, is how do we intervene now? And I think that I think it's gotta be a balance. I'm hearing between the enforcement and 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 planning's gotta take a good hard look at these things because. Some, we were using some other statistics and Noel was talking about. That there's, sometimes there's a better way to look at the numbers. As far as some of these density issues are concerned, so that they're they're actually relevant to. The application and the application site. Does anybody else?
I I get what you what you're saying and maybe this is kind of a. An idea and it it will have to require legal advice. Because nine three five five oh is a targeted area where the numbers show that these problems are there. How legal would it be to put a a pilot program or maybe even. A moratorium on having any more alcohol outlets? To see if that really correlates with the number of outlets and if the crime numbers would go down.
Well, right now with the way the numbers are, it doesn't. It were, if you call us an anomaly, we're seeing crime continuing to go down. So if you look over what Noel showed us. On a peak and drop and a peak and drop over the past five years, even when there were more outlets than less and more, it didn't matter. Crime was still continuing to go down. And again, we're stepping back and looking at. Nine three five five one having more outlets than nine three five five zero. Well, there's more retail there where the restaurants onsite, alcohol offsite. When we look at the numbers, these places are a matter of convenience. It is pedestrian. People walk to these areas, just as Councilmember Ben in court, some a little bit more upright than others. But but they are they are convenient to the residents who live there, but when we look at. The overall crime numbers and we look at the the one ninety number of part one crimes for that zip code. In that area, that doesn't tell us that we've got an epidemic. And particularly since there's less outlets than say an area like nine three five five one. If you go to the ratio of outlets. Per population.
With with all the respect and and difference in the numbers that you're mentioning being higher than nine nine three five five one. You must be including restaurants.
I am. Those are all outlets.
But when we look at primary uses, liquor stores, there are not the same number of liquor stores on nine three five five oh than there are on three five five one.
For offsite, the number's higher than nine three five.
That seems to be the trouble, the offsite sale. It's not the restaurants. Because comparing outlet numbers on nine three five five one to nine three five five oh.
But take that theory for just a thought. Take that theory then, if you were to take that theory less offsite. Equates to less crime. If nine three five five one has far less offsite liquor stores, then they would have a tremendously lower crime, but that's not.
I I would venture to say that it's much less likely to have a service call at a restaurant than it would be at a liquor store.
Well, one of the one of the things that I thought was really interesting on the last. The last set of stats we got and we drilled down into the last set of permits we had. One of the things I thought that was really interesting. One of the things I thought that was really interesting is, we start looking at part one crimes and, and. And then looking at some of the part two stuff, but I think it's a part one that comes into there. But I don't know that anyone's ever established that a burglary from a motor vehicle has got absolutely anything to do.
That's the problem.
With, with a liquor store, you know, other, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's more prevalent. If you're sitting at a restaurant drinking all night, somebody's gonna break into your car. But how's that, how's that the restaurant's fault? So that's what I'm trying to, you know, um, when we start talking about crime rates. I think we've gotta be careful about what the type of crime.
Let me jump on in, so part one crimes are eight crimes that we've decided nationwide that we're gonna use as a standard for definitions.
Right.
There are other crimes that are not being calculated, and these are our part two crimes, that includes your graffiti, your vandalism's. Um, littering, any other, any other type of, you know, quality of life issue. So when you're looking at numbers, when we talk about these part one crimes, that's not including any of those. Um, secondly. I, I might be a while, I'm sorry. Um, secondly, I, I think that we're also forgetting that nine three five five zero has the most affordable housing. Uh, and so we have a lot of, a, a lot of density there. And we have a lot of mental illness, and a lot of people self-medicate with the alcohol. So it may not be necessarily an alcohol problem, it could be a mental health issue that needs to be addressed. Um, also, as, as far as correlating crime, the way that our UCR, the Uniform Crime Report, is the, the, what we use to calculate our crime. Um, federally, that's gonna be changing um in probably a year and a half, two years. With the new neighbors reporting system with the FBI, they will be asking questions about alcohol and drug use. Meaning that they will ask the victim, have you been drinking, have you been using drugs?
I feel like the part of her has been doing it for thirty-five years.
And, and they will also be asking um if the offender was, we don't capture that data at this time.
Right.
So it's very hard to know which crimes are alcohol-related, um, because we're not, we don't have the. The forms and the ability to necess- necessarily capture that data automatically. When we get our new neighbors um records management system, and it'll automatically be downloading that data so we can do a better analysis. Um, and also you have to understand that unless the deputy smells alcohol on somebody's breath, they can deny all day long that they've been drinking, oh, no, I wasn't drinking. Um, it's kind of a judgment call, so there, there's a lot of variables that go into, was it an alcohol-related crime? But I think the bigger thing that we need to understand is that we, we do have, we have, we have homeless or part, partially home to people. We have mental illness, we have drug addiction, we have alcohol addiction. It's not just one thing that we're gonna have to address, it's gonna have to be a community-wide effort. Um, and nine three five five zero has the largest population, and it has the, the lower cost housing. Um, for people that may not have as much resources as people on the west side. Maybe we do need to get some more facilities in there for, for low income, to address a lot, a, a wide variety of problems.
I'm, I'm glad we opened up this discussion because it is, it is, it has multi, it has multiple angles to this. This isn't just something you can just throw, oh, it's this or that, there's, you know, the issue, it starts at home, and then you have the enforcement in the areas, we know there's a problem. Then you have, you know, the community follow-up, and then there's the stuff we can do on the city side to make sure we can prevent more from going into this area. I think we have a good discussion, I'm actually eager to hear if we have any public comment or what the people have to say.
Okay, they, they listen down here, but sure, yeah.
I'm eager, and then we can get back into it.
Do we have any speaker slips, or take those first?
Yes, we do.
Okay, what? I don't know, look. Okay, you're gonna speak on behalf of your group, who's all here with Pueblo Salud? Okay, so you're, you're gonna speak on behalf of those guys? Because if you're gonna do that, and we're not gonna end up getting tripled down on all this, I'll give you as much time as you need to make this presentation and extend your time. But what happened last time is we gave you a bunch more time, then we had three or four more people came up and kinda. They represented group and kind of extended it, so I, I'm willing to do that, but help me out here, okay?
Mayor, we're very conscious of what you want uh in terms of time, here's the thing. So we invited uh representative of Antelope Valley Union High School District.
Okay.
There's several individuals who are here representing their churches. These are individuals that have never been part of this effort before. And we want you to continue to see how this effort continues to expand and expand.
And we appreciate the fact that you brought them.
So we like for them to speak.
I just didn't, I, I just was looking at if you had like several more staff members that were gonna come up, so if you're gonna.
JJ, um, I'm sorry, um, mayor, um, we can do it two ways, I can go ahead and do the whole presentation, you give me the time to do it?
I, I think you're the subject matter expert from your organization, I would appreciate that.
Alright, let's do it that way, um, we were asked to go ahead and prepare a PowerPoint presentation, and we have that as well. Uh, can we go ahead and, and do that?
Do you wanna give an introduction to this?
Um, yes, uh, first of all, uh.
Thank you for being here, by the way, we re, oh, we always appreciate the dialogue we can have with, with the group.
Thank you, mayor, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to address you today. Um, a couple of months ago, you took it upon yourselves to direct to uh place this item on the agenda. For us, that was huge, very, very big, so we appreciate that. Um, so yes, um, my name is Javier Flores, and I'm here representing two organizations, Pueblo Salud. And the Palmdale Prevention Community Council, that council has existed for twenty years. Uh, we focused on uh alcohol for a while, then we shifted and focused on tobacco, then we went back to alcohol. Um, Fred Thompson was one of our members for twelve years, actually. He helped us out for a long, long time, mostly tobacco. Having said that, so I'm gonna go ahead and read this document and. Let's start, also, uh, in terms of background and history. Uh, since the year two thousand, for the last twenty years. Um, leaders of the Antelope Valley have been admonished by the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. To be cognizant of our great health disparities, and to look at alcohol and tobacco as primary causal factors. The AV Press article came out in two thousand and was titled Alcohol Abuse Now Top Valley Health Risk. Two years later, an article in the AV Daily News titled AV Smoking Tops County. Came out warning us to pay particular attention to our tobacco consumption. The same alarm has been sounding time and time again since then, what we did, we're sorry that you can't read it. But we thought that the, you can read the title, and you can't read the date, two thousand. Alcohol Abuse Now Top Valley Health Risk, two thousand.
Where's, where's it sitting at twenty years later?
Oh, it's worse.
Okay.
It's worse. Uh, AV Smoking Tops County, this is two years later, two thousand. Alright. So, eh, we don't even, if we can't get that, guys, everything that's on the PowerPoint is in here as well.
Javier, do you have any new stats?
Uh, yes, we do.
Cause I don't let my students, when I teach, bring in data that's over five years old, just, I'm just saying. The fresher the data, the more accurate we can make it.
Oh, no, 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 absolutely, I'm just saying, since twenty years ago, they've been warning us, they've been admonishing.
What's it now, what if it's better, how do we know it's not better now that it was then?
We'll see.
Okay.
We'll take a look.
I wanna see current data.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, so. Uh, ten years later, concerned about the call that seemed to go unheeded by our local leaders. Then AV Press edit, editor William P. Warford suggested we attack morbidity stats. The same as crime stats, added that. Quote, poor health is not only a human tragedy for those who perish under families. It also translates into the lost productivity at work and high insurance rates for AV businesses. So it impacts the business, what he did not mention is the loss in tax revenue to cities. This is what should concern you, the loss in tax revenue to cities from corporations whose profit margins are being curtailed. By an ill workforce and are paying less taxes to their host cities because of it. And this is what uh Tussaud and McPherson from uh. Uh, where was he, CEO McPherson of Lockheed Martin. Um, United Way, Kaiser Permanente tried to tell all of us in two thousand ten. Uh, Dr. Philip Tussaud then said, uh, who is currently on the AV Health District Board. Trying to bring this message to local business sector during a health summit. He touted Bo- Bob McPherson of Lockheed Martin for their trailblazing effort to promote health within the company. And tried to use them as an example for other businesses to emulate. To be noted, CEO McPherson acknowledged the key factor when he stated the company was swamped. So here's the opinion page written by William P. Warford. Says attack morbidity stat same as crime rates. Um, here's where we're saying, higher percentage of people die from preventable diseases here than the rest of the county. This is not only a human tragedy for those who live in uh cut short and, oh, whose lives are cut short. And their families, poor health translates to lost productivity and highest insurance rates. For Antelope Valley businesses. This is the event that took place. Where Dr. Tussaud is featured with, with Bob McPherson. And here, Dr. Tussaud is saying, the mortality rate in the Antelope Valley is an eight hundred and sixty-eight point one deaths. Per one thousand, one hundred thousand population compared to a rate of seven hundred and ninety-eight point one. For the United States as a whole, eight hundred and sixty-eight to seven hundred and sixty-eight. In the Antelope Valley, twenty point four percent of residents are smokers compared to nineteen point eight for the nation. The contrib- that contributes to a higher rate of emphysema deaths in the Antelope Valley, sixty-seven point three. Compared to forty-one point four for the nation. Um, stats that we're gonna show you will show you that we have a whole slew, something like fourteen different diseases that we're dying from. At a higher rate than the county norm, all related to alcohol and tobacco. The key thing that McPherson said is way at the end, he said, um. The company also looked at its vending machine and swapped out some high calorie. Low nutrition snacks for healthier choices. If you are providing the salt and sugar, you are contributing to disease. This struck a nerve with us, because this is what we've been trying to tell you for a long, long time. We are providing the alcohol that is causing increased consumption. It's not the one outlet that we're allowing. It's the large number of outlets that we're allowing, that's the big, big problem, and we're gonna see how many outlets we're talking about in just a minute. Uh, the current situation, so what has transpired in the past twenty years in terms of our health and safety? Is the AV a healthier and safer place to live and work? It seems that all the efforts of the medical field, the business sector, and our political leadership have missed the mark. That we are all trying to reach, though we have made some strides, our health continues at the bottom rungs of the county. Ten years ago, Dr. Tussaud calculated we were dying at a rate thirty-five percent higher than the county norm. Today, using the same mathematical equation formula. We estimate our death rate to be thirty-one percent higher than the county norm, so we made four percentage points. Uh, increase. Progress, today, using the same mathematical formula, oh, I'm sorry. Um, we have witnessed both Lancaster and Palmdale trying to do well by their residents. They have adopted alcohol and tobacco control policies, developed bike lanes and walking and hiking trails. Uh, they sponsor health promotion and health promoting activities through their Parks and Recs Department. And each city has five or six houses converted into safe spaces where health is promoted almost daily. Yet, our AV lifespan is ten years shorter than the county norm. Why is that? Why is that? The Los Angeles County Department of Public Health and countless research studies have informed us for the past twenty years. In no uncertain terms, that alcohol and tobacco outlet density, alco- also contributes to high violent crime. It is our contention, based on the public health model, that the primary element driving this problem is alcohol and tobacco outlet density. We've tried everything, the state of California did twenty years of informing and educating. And they dropped, the state, they dropped their level from nineteen percent to eleven percent. But ours remains at nineteen point two, uh eighteen point two, I can't remember what the exact rate is. But it's higher than the county norm. And we think that that consumption rate is as a result of all the tobacco outlets that exist in our community.
We're trying to, let's focus on the alcohol, cause that's our topic.
Well, no, uh, no, mayor, uh, we're here to ask you to help us. Work with both the alcohol and the tobacco ordinance.
We're doing that, but unfortunately, the agenda is specific to the alcohol, so we're gonna have to kinda try to limit. Uh, to the discussion on the alcohol outlets, okay?
We were not aware of that, we didn't focus on that, uh, but we'll go ahead and try it, um.
Just help us out there.
Sure, no problem.
We're all over the place here.
No problem, but uh, you know, again, we just wanna reiterate, we want to deal with to- tobacco as well.
I'm a reformed smoker, man, I get it.
So alcohol-related problems is a purposely general, general term. Used to encompass more than just alcoholism, and it includes a vast variety of maladies, including a whole host of health problems. But it also includes violent crime along with socialills like spousal and child abuse. Mental health problems such as depression and suicide, uh DUI. Um, rates and related property damage accidents and deaths. Knowing this, it is hugely problematic to have witnessed the increase in alcohol and tobacco outlets in zip code nine three five five oh. During the past eight years, and I'd like to ask you to take a look at this document here. The one that looks like this. Now this document, what it shows you, cause we kept talking about the type of liquor stores that we have. And each zip code here, this tells you exactly the numbers and types. And it confirms what Councilman Carrillo was saying. Um, you know, we do have a whole bunch of outlets in nine three five five one. Um, but the vast majority of them are restaurants. Uh, the last we counted fifty-five, fifty-five of those were. Uh, restaurants, what we have here, and what we can see is nine three five five oh. We have six convenience stores, ten liquor stores, eight gas stations, and only eight supermarkets. A total of thirty-two off-sale licenses. In nine three five five one, the zip code that Mike um mentioned. We only have two convenience stores, only one liquor store, only two gas stations, fourteen supermarkets. So that's where their off-sale numbers increased, but it's all supermarkets. For a total of nineteen, we have thirty-two off-sale, they have nineteen. So if you look at the top graph, here's where we've got off-sale, we've got on-sale. Nine three five five oh is thirty-one, off-sale, we have thirty-two, total of sixty-three. In nine three five five one, off-sale, that's restaurants, we have fifty-four. Off-sale nineteen, only nineteen, and most of them, like I said before, are big box stores, twelve or fourteen of those. So. You know, it, it, it's apples and oranges, we're two very separate communities. When United Way asked. Uh, Dr. Tussaud and Kaiser and all these entities to put together their event in the year two thousand ten. They labeled their study A Tale of Two Cities, and they were comparing. The county and uh, and Palmdale, they were comparing uh the nation and Palmdale. We are comparing zip code nine three five five one and zip code nine three five five oh, this is a tale of two cities. Now, another thing was mentioned, the crime issue is perplexing us very, very much. Um, we ask you to take a look at this document now. Uh, you're very familiar with it, I'm sure, yes, Ms. Bentecourt. In this document, we've gone ahead and colored out four reporting districts. That are all in zip code nine three five five oh. Each of those has the vast majority of crime. And you're talking about thousands more crimes than in other reporting districts. When you uh, uh, when a alcohol outlet comes before you. To ask for a CUP in this, in these uh reporting districts, you always see reports that tell you. You always see reports that tell you, uh, does it meet the crime standard? Is there less than a hundred and twenty percent of the city's crime norm? And the answer is no, it's one hundred and seventy six percent. It's, you know, three hundred and some percent, it's four hundred and fifty percent. It's always way, way over the hundred and twenty percent mark.
Just be very careful with these reporting districts, like you see twenty six oh nine between the two there. That's a school. Certain schools and the mall all have their own assigned reporting districts. So you can't compare one reporting district to the other without knowing the population of each of those.
That's fine, but I don't think that any of that, uh, Councilwoman Bentecourt denies the problem.
Right, if you were to calculate in the actual population, twenty six oh seven, twenty six oh eight. Um, and twenty six ten are very, very large RDs and contain most of the population for ninety five.
I think we're talking about with the, with the, with the. With the density factors that Noel was talking about, gives you a totally different picture than than these because. These were set up for convenient purposes, for patrol purposes and things of that nature. And that's why when we look, when we look at it from a uh weighted standpoint, based on density or uh alcohol.
And then at the end where you get to the eight thousand RDs, those are parks. So nobody lives at a park, so you're not gonna have a a a population count there.
Right.
So you have to really understand what these RDs are, reporting districts are and what's contained in them. So maybe you and I can have a meeting sometime and I can go over those with you.
That's fine, but answer me this, Councilwoman, then you're looking at this report and does anything alarm you?
No.
Nothing here?
I I look at, I've I've looked at this data for twenty five years, this is not out of the ordinary. And that is where the majority of the population is, where the majority of the businesses are. That's why those apartment crimes are occurring there, if you have people, you have crime.
So the, when your staff reports that the crime uh incident rate for a given. Um, CRD is four hundred and twenty percent or census tract.
When I look at a reporting district and we've got a spike in crime, we use direct patrol and and other uh types of intervention to try to bring that crime down.
And I think too, this is, this is the question I was asking. Uh, Mr. Flores about earlier is is that, you know, some of these, I think you can connect with with an alcohol related issue. Uh, but when I'm sitting here and I'm, I, you know, um. I got this, this one district got the highest rate of forgery, I don't think that's got anything to do with that. Uh, fraud, non specific, non sufficient fund checks. Um.
That would be a retail outlet.
Yeah, exactly. Um, um. You know, but I think you can legitimately uh talk about the things that, you know, uh drunk drug or alcohol, sure. Disorderly conduct, maybe, you know, but things like um.
Violent crime, uh, Mayor, don't forget, uh, we've given you reports in the past, uh, these are research studies. And um, who that show a direct link between alcohol availability, alcohol density and violent crime. But there's other reports that we gave you the last time we came and presented. And what it talked about was.
I was really saying, just to keep it in perspective, because somebody getting their car broken into. Doesn't necessarily mean it had to do with the fact that there was a liquor store or.
This thing had liquor in the car.
Well, yeah.
And they wanted it.
So, well, here's the other thing that I'm hoping that you pay attention. You see way on the bottom where it says non criminal incidences, another concern of ours, and it was mentioned earlier, but. The incidences of mental health, mental illness and suicide and suicide attempts. Those are very high in our designated areas or CRDs as well. These are things that concern us and they're also research that shows a direct link between alcohol outlet density. And suicide and mental health. Alright, so. Here's what we like, we went ahead and wrote this, we don't have to read it all, um, we just want you to know. We are very, very um gratified that you're even taking this issue up. Uh, ye- years ago, this wasn't happening. Um, but what we would like to do, what the Pueblo Salud and the Palmdale Prevention Community Council. Would like to do today is request the city council direct staff to begin working with Pueblo Salud. To fashion all that is required. In order to, and it's the four bullets that we have way at the end. In order to uh that no new conditional use permit. Or change to an existing conditional use permit whereby the change would result in an increase. In the amount or type of alcohol sold be granted any establishment for the purpose of off sale. Incidental and primary alcohol sales excluding big box stores. You know, we're not concerned with the Aldi's, with the Vons, with the Trader Joes, we want those stores to come in as well.
Talking liquor stores and convenience.
That's correct.
I think that's what we said.
I I think that was the issue last time, is the mom and pops came in and going, why are you giving Aldi's a pass and I'm trying to run a family business? That's the issue that we had last time, that's.
We have an answer for that.
Okay.
It's the high crime rate and the low health rates that we're experiencing as a result of all the alcohol and tobacco proliferation.
Right, but you understand as as a council representing all of the people of our community, how do we punish a mom and pop because they don't have an Aldi's name?
Here's what I suggest, you know, this conversation, we're hoping would take place throughout the course of a six month period. We know that we weren't gonna resolve that here today. I I welcome the conversation if you want to continue the discussion.
And you know how I feel about alcohol and cigarettes, I'm I'm like, I'm a teetotaler and I don't like smoke or smokers. I mean, I like smokers, but not the smoking.
So it's.
We've talked about this for years, but how do we apply fairness across the board? This, this is the issue that we have in our community. We don't wanna punish a mom and pop because they don't have a Von's name or they don't have an Aldi's name or they don't have, you know, one of the other big box names. We wanna be able to be fair to all businesses coming to our city, so this is something we're, we're gonna have to discuss.
Let me ask you a question. So if that's the case, then let's say a hundred or two hundred stores, just for the sake of argument. Uh, alcohol liquor stores wanted to come into zip code nine three five five one. Would anybody at this table be willing to allow that to happen? Or does anybody automatically think, you know, that might pose a problem?
That might pose a problem.
For that community, right? Alright, so I'm just giving you this, the other side of that coin.
You're oversimplifying that, because you you're not gonna get a hundred people showing up tomorrow, number one, number two. Um, the, it, it, I think that you see the, when we start talking about the convenience and necessity. Aspect of things that tends to be the overriding consideration sometimes. Uh, uh, the convenience stores, which is what these all pretty much come in as, you know, for all practical purposes. They're coming in cuz they're trying to fill a gap because of the fact that the that the big box store. Either left there, wasn't being patronized there or or whatever, you know? So that, that, that's why they're filling that thing in. So I can tell you, i- if you, if you, if you wanna turn around and try to open a con- you know, that convenience store perhaps. Next to uh, uh, you know, uh, the Walmart or uh, uh, or uh, or or Trader Joe's. Uh, he's probably not gonna be able to compete, you know, going head to head with a store of that nature. So I think that that's, you know, the, the, the business people are gonna locate their business where their business is gonna be successful. Not merely because gee, there isn't another one of me there. Maybe there isn't a market for that person there, you know what I'm saying, you know?
Well, and and any city anywhere could put in a, you know, some type of a rule that says that we can. Will allow in one alcohol permit for every thousand residents. I mean, there's all kinds of formulas that a city can do, but do we really wanna do that? Do we wanna, you know, open the door or close the door? I mean, this, this is a, it's gonna take some time to go over all this and think about this.
Well, when you look at the uh distance requirements that are existing, the current ordinance. It is not easy for a liquor store to meet those distance requirements. And typically, they're would wanna go to an existing building because the costs associated with new development. So when you look at the likelihood of a liquor store applying in in nine three five five one. Because there's not as many available sites, that may.
Zones, right? Areas that have been zoned, turn all those sites to come in. Let's change the zoning so that we could allow more liquor stores in nine three five five one. If if we want more liquor stores to come in to the city so that we can generate more tax revenue, then let's change the zones. In nine three five five one.
I don't think it's the zoning, I think what I wanna say is there's no available space, there's no.
That's what I'm saying.
There's no more corner spots left for more liquor stores, it's, you know, maybe.
I'm being facetious, there's no one in the world that would want that on any zip code, nine three five five one or.
That's, that's not the point that I was making.
But but you're, let's say you wanna open a business.
Market is.
They're gonna go, oh, look, there's nothing available that I can afford. On either side, so I'm gonna go center city where the the rent is lower and there's space available. So as a business owner, you you've gotta put your business where you, where you can afford to put it.
Alright, so we're gonna.
Yeah, I think we have some more.
Look, we should look at distance requirements.
I don't have to be at work till seven tomorrow.
Mayor, I just wanna address the issue of convenience, um, we were involved in drafting what we called the Caldera Bill. Back in nineteen ninety four and that is what.
San Fernando?
Uh, yes, tha- that's the one that defined public convenience and necessity. And believe me, it was much, much different than the definition that we use here in this city. You know, then it meant you really have to have a product that is going to be beneficial to a community. That nobody else has. So if you've got an Armenian community or an African American community or Chinese community and you're gonna provide. Products that are specific to that group, then fine. That was what convenience and necessity meant was.
If you recall, we had that happen with this, with a particular market and we went head to head with it cuz they came back in. It, I don't know that they were selling any ethnic uh items and tried to upgrade to a liquor license and. That, that, that didn't, that didn't end up flying, so.
So in conclusion, we're here to ask you to direct staff to work with us. So that we could iron out all of these issues, all of these concerns. And come to you with a product that we can all agree on in a six month period of time. Um, we say that because at a meeting, uh, it was Noel Doran who said. The issue isn't public, lack of public will. The issue is not resistance from staff to do what you want us to do. The issue is uh the audits itself. The ordinance is written in such a way that it forces us to move as staff. In a certain way, in a certain direction. So if you see that all these liquor outlets have been allowed and since two thousand and twelve to the present. And zip code nine three five five, oh, the pla- the worst place you could put a new one, it's because of the ordinance, so. Jim, so Jim Bertie said, well, then why don't we fix the ordinance, come up with some solutions? Draw some changes to that ordinance so that we can stop that from happening. We're here to ask you to direct staff to do that.
You're not gonna like me at this moment, a- and you know I love ya, but let, let's be honest. Do we want to direct staff to use staff time and taxpayers' dollar to address a problem that may not exist? Because you have not convinced me based on the stats that it's actually a crime problem or health problem. Because the stats that Mike Miller has produced has shown that our crime has gone down. So do we wanna use taxpayers' money to, and staff's time, taking them away from other projects to address a problem that doesn't exist?
Well.
You know what? I, th- this, this is, this is actually a very good dialogue. Um, do you have anything else? I got a couple of people that are waving their hands furiously in the back.
Oh, I'm pretty much, I'm done.
You're good?
Yeah.
Thank, thank you very much, this is good stuff, though, I appreciate that. Um, did we have any other speaker slips now, so we can maybe go into speaker slips and then uh non speaker slips?
We have Steven Updike.
Steven Updike? Mr. Updike? Okay, Leftari next.
We have Aurora Hernandez.
Aurora? Waving off? Okay.
Um, Danielle, Era.
That's why I have you read these.
Danielle.
Okay, is there somebody that sounds vaguely familiar to that? Maybe not.
Ms. Rosie Vanilla.
Rosie? You're good? Okay.
Cory Saxton.
Cory?
Hello, Council, my name is Pastor Cory Saxton of Christ Church in the Valley here in nine three five five zero. Um, I just wanted to just publicly say I'm in full support of the efforts of the Pablo Salud, um, and I just back their efforts.
Thanks, we appreciate your work in the community too, Pastor, you do good work. Okay. So, come on down. State your name for the record, and if you want us to follow up with you, give the lady your uh, your name.
I will, sounds good, uh, Carlos Shahidi, um, I do own a couple of tobacco and uh alcohol outlets in the area. Uh, first thing I wanna say is I feel like I need a drink after his speech, so that's, that's for sure. Okay, so one thing I wanna say, so we all know alcohol's not gonna go nowhere, tobacco's not gonna go nowhere, I mean, I think this is more of a statewide thing slash uh federal level here. Um, I wanna, I wanna share my story a little bit, uh, my mother passed away when I was one. And my father passed away when I was thirteen. Uh, I grew up, wasn't suicidal, I wasn't depressed, I wasn't on drugs. Uh, I became a successful business owner. So in regards to those uh stats that we talk about when it comes down to alcohol, I don't believe in that. Now, I'm more of the liquor store side, along with a couple others here that are liquor store owners in the area. Uh, we've been here for a really long time. Uh, one thing I wanna say is the stat numbers for those crimes in those area codes, uh, zip codes, I'm sorry. What are they corporate level wise? How many times are corporates calling the police station?
Right.
Compared to these small business owners? Because I wanna give you something inside my businesses.
I can hear this, but I need you to take over for a minute, like, pass me two hours.
I need to understand one thing, I can tell you in my businesses myself. So I get customers that come in, okay, so you know, this is gonna happen. Uh, once a week, once a month, sometimes, twice a week, sometimes, you'll get somebody that comes in, he'll grab a beer and he wants to try to steal it, okay? I'm not gonna waste the sheriff's time. I'm not gonna sit there and call the sheriff from and say, hey, yo, listen, I got this guy standing outside stealing a beer, but tell him, give me the beer. And pick up and go, I don't wanna see you here no more. That happens, it does happen, I'm not gonna tell you it doesn't happen. Now, what hap- we patrol our own businesses. I think that this mindset is not given to you guys. I feel like corporates do not do that, corporates, you know, they have security guards, they have to follow rules, they have to follow. Uh, 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 a set of rules that are given to by their security companies and corporate laws, uh, and I think this is a huge issue too. So I'd really wanna see like a crime map of dots in red comparing liquor store owners. To corporates, Walmarts. I have three locations in Lancaster. And um in Lancaster, one of the locations I was trying to turn, turn into a, a market, an actual market with alcohol beverage. I met with City of Lancaster, uh, to go over a couple of things, uh, they came up to me and said, you know what? We can't give it to you, I said, why, I said, cuz it's a high crime area. Okay, that's fine, they pulled up a map, okay? Walmart had maybe a hundred and fifty, two hundred red dots all over it. I looked at my side of things, it was all light orange. I was like, what is the light orange? They said light orange has crime, but it's a very low. I was like, why is this all over Walmart? Cuz this is how many calls, each red circle represented how many calls of Walmart made.
You need to wrap it up, sir.
So in, 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 in general, I, I just, I just, I, I really, really want you guys to understand all these liquor store owners, um, along with myself. We would love to work with you guys with anything it is you guys want, uh, we just don't want to lose everything. You know, I mean, we have bills, we have, I have siblings in colleges, I have everything it is, you know? We wanna work with you guys, the brown paper bag you gave is a perfect example, so why not make it to where we have to cover that with a brown paper bag? You know what I'm saying? We would love to do that, we have no problem with it, you know? Uh, we just have to pay our bills, we, you know, we, we, we wanna work with you guys, we really do.
Okay, that's appreciated.
I appreciate it, thanks, guys.
Let's see, there was a gentleman that wanted to speak a while ago, fell on the cap.
Yes, I'm John Friend, uh.
Hey, John.
I'm John Friend and.
See you.
What I uh did here, I was listening to everything about these liquor stores. I have something I've been working on for Reward Fund to Catch People. I'm gonna donate some money to fund, I want one member of the DA on that committee. One from the Sheriff's Department, one from each city and one from each unincorporated area. Have all the homeowners in the valley say put in a hundred dollars a year. Rockwell, a hundred thousand. The mall, fifty. I want it to be three to four million, I'm gonna give them some money to start it. I'm too busy building a, something that finance free technical schools for kids all across the United States. To train them and get them into public works where they'll pay for their education, to give them back on my part. The other thing I looked at here, you said how we've maybe fight this better. The other thing I looked at here, you said how we've maybe fight this better, I come in, uh. Oh, about nineteen, uh, two thousand one, somebody damaged a car, I was giving to my daughter and I said, who's a council member? For my precinct or whatever, you know, they said, we don't have that, we have it at large, I said, you need to do that, you need to have precinct. Uh, the the areas that you're on a council for, so somebody's accountable. And we could go to that shit council member to make complaints if we're not getting enough police protection, and he did it, they did it in town here. Okay, for twenty five years, I've been telling you the city of Lancaster, they needed to have their own police department. Including the last mayor, for twenty five years, they finally did it, my concept was to have ten police officers in your city.
Bring us around to the alcohol issue job?
Yeah, I'll get right back. Here's the deal, you could have. Community assigned police near those problems, locations at the alcohol. They could just kinda be on.
Sort of like a zone deputy or something like that?
Right, but they'd be on those worse locations, then if there's something that is bigger than what's going on at the. Police at the liquor stores, they can get over there, and by the way, my thing for uh reward for the crime. The liquor stores are lining up saying, we'll give you a thousand dollars, get it started a piece, so it'd be kind of a thousand dollars for every business. Hundred dollars a year for every homeowner, more for apartment owners, but the committee I said with the uh. DA person on the other people from one person from East City, they would give the money out, I'm too busy, I'll give them the money and give them the concept. And be uh, I'll get back to that, anyway, and for the uh, for the liquor store people. You'd have your own police force, it wouldn't take forty five minutes for people to get there. I'm telling you, get your own police force, give the rest to the county, just like I said, to Lancaster.
Just so you know, it's about thirty nine percent more, we did a study, but Cap, could you come on up and address the zone deputy issue you brought up? It's an interesting concept. You got anything like that?
Right now, we have uh four zone deputies that we use to um basically map out crimes throughout the city and be a relay to the other field units. When you start specializing, uh, you're tying up resources, unfortunately, we try to make everybody a generalist so they can be mobile. And work the whole city and not just be focused on one uh type of crime that's happening.
As far as having, having somebody that knows the issues in a particular area in a neighborhood. Is that concept being applied at this time?
We are, we're engaging more into community and policing, and that's the whole concept, uh, be involved in your community, know who's in your community. Won't know what kind of crimes are going on in your community and address them all.
Okay, good, thanks. Okay, we'll we'll give you, next guy, we'll give each guy his time, okay, John, thanks. You can always call, you know where to find me.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, Council, um, my name is Matt Case, I'm from the Antelope Valley Union High School District. And uh, we are happy to have been invited here by Pueblo, Pueblo Isalud. Um, we didn't do any independent um data analysis or or research. But we are concerned about alcohol density uh around our schools and around minors, um. Uh, nine three five five zero area uh is where Palmdale High School is and so. Um, that is a concern of ours and so we wanted to be here tonight just to support the efforts. Of um reducing that density, if it makes sense, and if it's going to um improve. Uh, the quality of life for our students, so thank you for having me tonight, appreciate it.
Did you notice any changes when the liquor store on the corner closed down?
You know, so, so the statistics that I know from the student services perspective is that. Our second leading car- cause of suspensions and expulsions is related to drugs and alcohol. Number one is typically fights, number two is drugs and alcohol, so we know it is a big issue, um, we're getting inundated, I mean. Uh, you know, as the state of California, we have uh legalized uh marijuana, which has made our job much more difficult. And also the vaping epidemic is a big concern.
And we'll take some action on that, okay?
So thank you, I appreciate the time.
Great, thanks.
Can, can I just say something too, no, you can go sit down, um, yeah, we were talking about these liquor stores and the grocery stores and and. The crimes are not occurring at the liquor store and at the grocery stores, this is people taking their alcohol home. Getting in family fights, getting behind the wheel of a car and driving, um, neglecting their children, so I I think. Not only do we wanna work with them if we can, of, you know, as often as possible, to reduce. Um, alcohol outlets, but consumption, why are people consuming as much alcohol as they are, what it, what is the cause as making people do what they do? How do we stop people from drinking? Because, uh, we can take, we can take every alcohol outlet out of Palmdale and they will drive to Lancaster to get it. And they'll bring it back to their homes and into their cars and everything else, so if, if there's going to be. A a really strong push to reduce alcohol related crimes, crimes of violence, uh, uh, family crimes. We have, we have to figure out what, what is at the root, what makes people have their first drink, what makes kids, you know. Smuggle booze in their backpack to school, why are they doing it, what is the cause, I don't care how many outlets you take out, they will find alcohol. It's just like a drug addict, y- you know, drugs aren't, aren't lea- aren't legal, but boy, there's plenty of them out there.
I think it's, I think in some of these areas too, uh, that I've looked at some of this material that um, that um. Uh Javier had had provided, and I know that if you need, if you keep looking at that, you also find. With where these, where we have certain trends and certain types of crime, certain type of health issues, there was a huge study done on on. Uh, on the, on some of the health issues, renal problems and things like this, a lot of it tended to be. Directly related to some uh socioeconomic issues that were out there, uh, that were, uh, and and also.
When, when people are in pain and they can't afford it to the doctor, they drink.
Yeah, all those things, so it's, it's, it's not a simple.
It's not simple, it's very complicated.
Let me see, is there, is there somebody else that hasn't spoken that would like to come up to, come on down, fight, fight for the mic, it's all yours. You had, let, let me choose these guys.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, Ziad Watwa, I'm a local business owner here in Palmdale, twenty years. Uh, you wanna touch the bases on uh box stores compared to our liquor stores? And uh, and the theft uh issue, uh, holidays, I have a lot of uh. Uh, managers uh coming from Walmart to my store. And we always talk about the theft uh issue, so a big box, they do inventory once a week. And one of the managers, Centuries West and Walmart, every week of December, three thousand dollars in alcohol theft. That's just one box store, so that's twelve thousand average a month. Comparing to the liquor stores, we have such a tight grip on all of our alcohol, hard liquor is behind the counter. So we have zero theft in that regards, so when you're talking about one box store, twelve thousand dollars. In just a month of December, that's a lot of booze getting stolen, and that's getting drunk by people. And that's where all the problems are coming from.
Theft numbers, that's probably the highest theft store in the chain, so just so you know, close to the freeway and it's a big store. So the LP guys will tell you that the same, same statistics also apply to cosmetics and other things as well.
I knew the manager over at the old Walmart by home people, it's a, it's the same issue. All the big box stores, they have the same people going there, there's one security, they do not, security does not go after somebody that's for shoplifting. We are in front of the door, if you're gonna take this, you're gonna have to knock me over and that's why we tend to touch things up our own. We don't wanna bother law enforcement with such small issues, I just wanna let you guys know that and thank you very much, have a good night.
Appreciate that. Somebody else, uh, other gentleman over there? Go ahead, pull up, pull on up so you can jump up to the next sir.
Good evening, council, council members, my name is Randy Hawara, um, I, my family actually owns that convenience store on Thirty First Street East, Palm Boulevard. We've been there for like thirty years, uh, if you look up our, you know, records or whatever, we've never had a minor, uh, selling to a minor, take care of nothing like that. Actually, I'm, we're really good about that, I'm, we're, I I agree with you, I don't like seeing somebody walk out with a twenty four pack, but it's packaged, there's nothing I could do. You know, most of the time people have the packages so kids don't see it, and believe it or not, mo- most customers know not to come in that forty five minute. Timeframe, just to avoid the.
The traffic.
It's nuts, I actually have a few cop buddies, I literally tell them to come and just sit here. Every day on a daily basis, just to watch people fly by, it's crazy, you see hundreds of kids crossing the street and a guy driving fifty miles an hour, it's nuts. You know what I'm saying? After he was talking about how the, the numbers have been going down year after year after year. Javier came and showed you guys a report from twenty sixteen, so please take that into consideration. Also another thing, my employees and I, all of us, we, we know, we, we don't call. The police department unless it's life threatening, I don't care if you're stealing a hundred dollar item, we're not calling. For that simple fact that like you guys said, you monitor how many phone calls we do based on the zone. But here's another example, I have a house, three houses, uh, there's a home three houses down from us where cops are there five times a week, that has nothing to do with me. It has nothing to do with me, why am I being punished for their stupidity, for example, you know what I'm saying? Um. Also, one other thing is, he was talking about depression in the area, that does not completely correlate with alcohol. People have their own problems, losses in the family, can't find jobs, that does not have a hundred percent to do with alcohol, you know? And then again, one other thing you said is why do people go to alcohol for, for example, when they're stressed out? Living in California is not exactly the most pleasant place in the world, you know, you know this, so people have their things, I. I go to the gym, some people like to smoke, some people like to drink, some people like to go on walks, whatever it is, you eat, I do too, you know, so. You can't point everything at alcohol, we do try, we, like my family, my friend said. We do try to govern our own stores without including the Sheriff's Department, making things worse than they already are. Most of the time, it works just fine, please take that into consideration, we do like to work in the city of Palmdale, you know, and we hope to stay here forever. But it's gotta be give and take, you know, work with us, we'll work with you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
For all of you.
Of course.
If you have a visual customer who comes in and you're aware that maybe they've got a drinking problem. Have you ever reached out to law enforcement or to social services and kinda saying, hey, this guy really needs to have some help, he's in here every day. Drunk, blah, 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 I mean, do you, do you guys feel that?
Can I tell you something, so what we'll do usually is we cut that person off, if we know that person's family member, cool, we'll mention it to them, but we can. We don't know if he's gonna go somewhere else, he can go to Walmart, you know what I mean, so we do the best that we can, that's.
But you know, you, you could be part of the solution if, if you're able to, to, to build some kind of relationship with them and maybe get their name and their information.
Right.
And, and, and work with, you know, some of our Valley Oasis people to try and get these people into some, some counseling. So it, it, it would benefit you guys, it would make the, the public feel better, um, to, to try and have you guys as a resource.
Promise you, we do this, you guys just don't see our side, you know, you only see the, the cons that they present.
I work at the Sheriff's Department of Palmdale Sheriff's.
And, and you sound like you're by my store all the time, stop by and just say hello.
Wait, 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 what are you saying?
She's obviously picking up kids or something, yeah, thank you guys, very much, I appreciate it.
I have a question for the uh.
Sure.
Alcohol business community.
I, I think you're the guy up there, you're the closest.
Uh, what's being requested here for, for direction to staff is. No new conditional use permit or changes to existing conditional use permits, or would increase essentially in alcohol sales. From off sale. Are, is the plan, is the community planning to bring new liquor stores?
We are happy that you guys don't wanna, sorry, 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 go ahead.
Need the competition, do you?
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
So that's my question, I mean, are you seeking to have more liquor outlets or to?
We are happy you want this.
Or more conditional use permits to expand the existing business, are you planning to do that, then I don't understand what you're.
We just wanna make sure you guys are understanding that we're doing the best we can, we don't want more business, more competition, very simple. When, for example, I'm, I've been there, we've been there for thirty years and the school opens up across the street.
Right.
That's not my fault, they opened, you know what I mean, so just please take these things into considerations what we're asking.
No problem.
You know, for future references.
What they're asking for is no additional conditional use permits or changes in uh existing.
For new businesses.
Right?
Yeah.
So to do, to argue the opposite is to, that's, is because you're planning to have more.
No.
Well, no, but, and I kinda inverse, so they're also saying that we don't want competition, so I think you keep that in mind.
Right.
We'd like to stay where we are, you know?
We're probably on the same, we're probably on the same side.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and uh council member, my name is Adele Domingo, I'm. From Saint Mary's Health and Wellness Ministry, I'm being sent here by Father Von Winters just to read his message and his um. Opinions about the topic that we're talking about today, see if I may read.
Sure.
Um, our parish includes ten thousand registered households and covers all the areas. Of Palmdale, Little Rock, Lake Los Angeles and down as far as Acton and Aguadulce. Our church is located in the ninety five five zero zip code, and I have lived here in his, this community over ten years. I appreciate the work and efforts of Javier Flores and Pueblo Isalud to try lessen. The impact of an overabundance of alcohol outlets in our neighborhoods, he has been working on this problem for many years. And deserves the gratitude of the community, I have seen firsthand the problems of young people drinking too much. Driving under the influence, family domestic violence and all the health problems that alcohol causes. I am an occasional social drinker myself, and I'm not saying that all alcohol consumption is bad, but the reality is more normal. Drinkers can get their alcohol in grocery stores on stores like Bebmo, all these small liquor stores prey. On the poor and alcohol who, who don't have transportation and want, and want cheap liquor to feed an addiction. Or to get a quick high, and they also charge exorbitant prices. They attract a negative environment and are not constructed for the overall well being of the community, I understand the city wants to be pro-business. But so many liquor stores are necessary and the needs of the community sometimes outweighs tax revenue. Thank you, you're li- for listening to this message and you're all in my prayers as you work for the good of Palmdale and its citizens, thank you and God bless. Father Von Winters, pastor of Saint Mary's Church, Palmdale, California, thank you.
Tell Father, tell Father, we appreciate that.
Hey Noel, do we know when, when was the last liquor store um issued a permit within nine three five five zero, do you know? How long ago?
Carlene might go that off the top of her head.
Anybody know, I'm just curious. Okay, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm just really curious to see how, how often we were issuing these, I, Javier probably knows. Huh? Oh, no, no, I'm talking about a liquor store, not a, not a, not a grocery store.
Okay, I got a couple of speakers here.
We'll find out, I'm just curious to find out.
Hi, my name is Rosie Manila and I'm a Palmdale resident, and I'm here to just say to. All our community, um, outlets, that we are not here to get rid of businesses. If we're just making sure that students here in our valley have the opportunity to grow up without normalizing. Crime, violence and um drinking, that's all we're trying to do, okay? Um, we do have, there are studies that have been done that prove that nexus between alcohol outlet density. And crime and um, and, and if you guys, we have.
Was that a, was that a, was that a doctor out of UC San Francisco that did that study? Was that about, that's the guy, right, yeah, okay, yeah.
One of them, but there are several studies, not just here in the United States, but abroad as well. And um, one being done here would cost millions of dollars, and like I said before, we're not here to. Cause trouble to get rid of people, if they're good establishments, by all means, let them stay. Um, we don't wanna take away people's right to drink whenever they want to, um, like Adele said. We're occasional drinkers, right, and there's nothing against the businesses, we just wanna make sure that. Kids and students don't normalize that kind of behavior and that they don't have the opportunity to get a hold of um. Alcohol before they're old enough to make those wise choices, as you all know, or you might know, the frontal lobe is not developed. That part of the brain that makes good decisions, wise choices, so the fact that the law states twenty one and older. That's a great law, because if they start drinking when they're younger, then they develop um bad habits and pretty soon they become alcoholics. We wanna prevent that.
Is it not true that most kids get their alcohol from their parents?
At home, yes.
You know, I mean, I, I'm, I don't drink at all, I've never had alcohol in my house, so my daughter never had access to it from my house. But her friends did.
Right.
And so, you know, it's, it's not necessarily grocery stores, liquor stores, and this is where I wanna come up with questions, why do they start? Where, do we start educating the schools, do we start educating the parents, I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do as a community other than limit business.
If it's part of the multi angle problem where one of the issues is it starts at home.
It really does, and, and we.
Doesn't always start at home.
It's one of the many issues, like you just can't say, oh, it's this, it's this, that.
You're right, it's a multifaceted.
When, when, when the kids come to school with alcohol or dope, most of the time, I, and you can ask the, the guy from the school, they got it from their parents. They got it from their house. Um, so, you know, there's a lot of, there's, it's just such a big encompassing, um, and this is what I said about using staff time. This is such a big issue, I don't know that we have the time and the money to, to fully focus on it.
Suggesting the many here, but I think we got one or two other speakers here.
I just wanna thank you all for coming, and I, I don't wanna sound like I'm negative towards your organization. Cause I don't drink at all and I don't smoke, I, I.
Right.
I'm, I'm not, you know?
And I'm trying to make sure that.
I just don't.
And I'm trying to make sure that the community and all you know.
Yeah.
That we are not here to be prohibitionist. We're here to just make sure that our community is taken care of.
That we can justify spending, like I said, taxpayers' money if they're really.
Come on over to our office, get some data.
Okay, next speaker.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Keep, keep in mind, there's somebody standing behind you.
Um, the reason why I'm speaking up is because I was cashier.
What's your name, just so they can?
Miss Elena Chavez.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, um, I was cashier at Walmart for eleven years. Two thousand fifteen, I was hit by a customer. Last prevention gave the, um, sheriff's department my CD, my pictures. And destroyed it. And, um. Until this day, I'm trying to fight it, the best way I could because I ran into a depression two years after. Not getting a dress from it from Walmart, from the police department, from Mental Health America, or the insurance company. So, um, I have.
How's, how can we help relative to the alcohol ordinance?
Um, I don't know.
That's a tough.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know, but, but I have more security at Walmart. Because when I was struck, I didn't have any security at all, I didn't have anyone behind me. So it's a big epidemic. It is.
Well, I think part of the problem also comes down to some of the props. And they don't prosecute these guys, so I mean, that makes it a problem too sometimes, so that's, that's why they, you know. They just put a big bug guy at the door and you can walk out, it seems like.
Exactly, the door guys aren't enough.
Exactly, okay.
The ones with the, the ones with the yellow jackets aren't enough, they look like minions.
Yeah, they're not gonna stop anybody.
All they had to do was trip the man on his way out and they didn't wanna do that.
Somebody will sue him, so. Okay, well, thanks.
Thank you for listening, thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir?
Hi, my name is Victor Ramirez, um, I just wanna make a statement. Uh, we're not against the business that already formed established. So for the gentlemen, um, it's nothing personal, you know, we just don't want more alcohol outlets to come, you know, into the city. So, I mean, that would benefit too because they wanna have competitions, they were saying back there, you know, like, oh. Um, you know, why are they against our business, we're not against the business already established, that's all I wanna say.
So let me ask you a question, that's a good point. If he has a fire or an earthquake and he can't open up within, I think, ninety days, you know, he can't get a new permit if we put a rule like that in, you know that?
I'm pretty sure.
Hundred eighty days?
Hundred eighty, six months, yeah, so. Then he gets penalized because something was out of his control, it, just something to think about, so.
Okay.
All right, so as we go through this, those are the kind of unintended consequences that might come up, so, ma'am?
Hello? Hello?
Hi.
My name is Anaya, um, I just had a question for Laura specifically, cause you were talking about, um, Ed, um. About the youth having access to alcohol and I can see that being a problem especially around that age. And I just had like two questions, I was wondering, are there any like prevention educational programs in schools? And then also are teachers or staff mandated reporters if they witness that?
They are mandated reporters, um, but I think that every school, especially at the elementary schools, if you get them young. You know, get the mindset, you know, set to where they wanna be healthy and, 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 and pure and not smoke and not drink and be athletic. We gotta start it at the very, very young ages, and I think the schools, um, need to do more intervention, absolutely.
Yeah, cause I think it's just good like to talk about how like alcohol does lead to violence, cause it is true and it's not really talked about, like it does talk, they do talk about it with drugs, but not really, but definitely.
They spend the majority of their time talking about drugs, especially the hard drugs, um. They, they've been kinda hands off with the marijuana and with the alcohol, and I think the schools need to address both.
Both, I agree.
Yeah.
I think the DARE program was very successful and something like that should be brought back because that's, that's another.
We have SANE.
We have SANE now?
Da- DARE is LAPD.
Oh. Well, we need, we need more programs like that.
Yes, we do, we have McGruff too, so, you know.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, uh, last chance here, I knew we'd draw you out.
Steve Saint, um, this seems to be a, an issue.
She named this, so she.
Steve, Steve Saint.
You can say it again.
You said that to me last time too. Uh, it seems to be the same issue as like the second amendment where we're focusing on the guns, like the guns are the problem. It's the person, it's, uh, we have the potential to be addicted to it, it's, it's our own autonomy. That is drawing us to this, not, not the alcohol, so I don't think the answer is limiting the alcohol, it's within ourselves, is that fair? And well, maybe just one last thing, I don't know if you guys are aware of it, but there's a new corporation that just started about a year ago. E-Claus. And E-Claus is a loss prevention for the government, as far as I know, they're in California right now, so I hope that guys helps you guys out.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. You've just been sitting there all real quiet, anybody over there? Any of you other gentleman over there? Before we, uh, close the public, uh, comment on this?
Move to close the public here.
Okay, I have a motion to close the public comment.
Second?
No, I, I have one more thing.
No, John, you already had a point, okay, so we're just, we're not, we don't, we don't go, we don't, no, no, Tom, we don't recycle, I know, it's okay, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you had. You had the time, so we, we do one at a time, so. Okay, so you had, had a motion, a second, uh.
Work fund for liquor stores.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, all right, okay, so, um.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um. I mean, we should address, ask this aspect in some fashion, um. But a question for Mr. Flores, if I, if I could, I know we just closed it, but.
No, you're calling him up, so that you're private.
So, um. Times change, population changes, demographics, economy, everything changes, uh. Is there a sunset provision to what you're asking for that, for example, it goes for? Four years or some period of time, because in, who knows what's gonna happen? In a decade, if we make this permanent, there's gonna have to be a whole other movement to change it. If the population increases, if all kinds of different things happen, is there a sunset provision that you're asking for?
Um, Councilman Loam, historically, you can remember, I'm trying to remember his name right now. In nineteen ninety-four, uh, the alcohol ordinance came into vogue.
Rachel?
Rachel, yeah, right? Every ten years after that, we took a look at the ordinance and revamped it. So it just happened that way, ninety-four, two thousand four, two thousand, not fourteen, but fifteen, almost ten years. And we're hoping that whatever we do now will last for ten years, give it some time to work. Um, but it doesn't have to. If something happens and the population explodes again like it did, you know, several years ago. Yeah, of course, we're gonna have to take a look at it again.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a suggestion here, and, um, because. The, the issue that's being talked about here is primarily talking about the impacts and adverse impacts in nine-three-five-five-oh. Um, and I know that staff has had some concerns, uh, uh, and, and, and I share those as well, is what's it? How, um, what happens with the economic impact, uh, with the, um, uh, development proposals and things of that nature? So, uh, what I'd like to suggest here is, I don't think we've thoroughly flushed all this out, we've had dueling stats. Uh, on this thing coming at us, and, uh, with this being in, in your guys' district. What I'd like to ask is, if, if the council will, will, um, indulge me for a moment here, I'd like to let. Uh, Mr. Corio and Ms. Betancourt be a, an ad hoc committee, come back in maybe ninety days. Uh, because again, we're not, we're not gonna sit here and drill the staff to death on this thing. But you, this, this is gonna impact your neighborhood, and when you come back, you complain something isn't coming, or we got too many or something, that's your neighborhood, okay? So, uh, come back in ninety days, uh, let's see, uh, March, April, May, maybe at the May meeting. Uh, and, and report back any additional findings or suggestions. Uh, and being cognizant of staff resources and stuff, but I think that you both have got quite a bit of resources at hand. Plus with Mr. Flores and the planning staff, um, I don't, I don't want, uh, us to, to. Having a, any sort of a knee jerk reaction on any particular item, but I think we have to take a very good look at. Are, are we gonna truly impact something? And how? So anybody, anybody have a problem with that, is that okay? All right?
I'm fine with that, how, how many members are you thinking about?
That's up to you guys, you guys work out, so. If you guys wanna bring in some resources, if you wanna talk to somebody, uh, but I, I would like to basically let. You know, let you guys engage on this, I know that you both had maybe some different ideas, that's why I thought you two would, uh. I mean, oil and water, acid and whatever, you know, but sugar and salt, whatever. But I, I think that we've got the ability here to help find whatever the, whatever the, whatever the middle ground is here. Um, if you two guys work on this and come back and, and then be sensitive to what the staff's needs are. Be sensitive to what Mr. Flores and his staff, uh, have available, utilize what you think is necessary.
And the business community.
And, uh, clearly, speak to the business community, you know, obviously, they could care less if another liquor store. But, uh, they're gonna care, they're gonna care a lot if we put a moratorium on and if they can't reopen in a hundred and eighty days, all of a sudden, it's gonna be a huge problem, so. Uh, cause I, I've seen that happen, so, all right, so.
If we, if we did that, I, I would agree, if we agreed to be part of that committee. But maybe we can bring something back even sooner at the April workshop.
No, 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 no.
I think he, I think, I think he got, I, I think you worked and she works.
Yeah, I have two jobs besides this.
They work, staff works, and, you know, so. You know what?
They should consult, uh, the city attorney to see whether there's any legal ramifications to imposing in just one area these limitations.
Well, I think that's.
People would say, oh, yeah, the, the rich white guy on the west side gets to drink, but the minorities in the middle don't, that's, that's what we're gonna hear.
I think, I think what you, I think what I'm, what I'm afraid of is that you end up getting, uh, you end up getting, uh, the store that doesn't open. And then says, you didn't allow me to serve the area, so that's the other thing, you know, so. All right, so we're gonna do that, you understand what's gonna go on, you guys talk it up, you got their numbers, emails, whatever works? Everybody, okay? All right, there you go. So we'll move on to item number twenty-three. Thank you very much, everybody, I wanna thank you, Javier, thank you very much for your work on that staff, thank you very much. All right. AQ, A, A D A Q M D, Mr. Bishop, would you like to take that item, sir?
I believe I'm, I was in this that meeting. Were you able to come there?
Okay, just a gotta meeting to finish up here, okay, so just swap cards. Okay, so this is the value in this part of the meeting is, is that we gave away a lot of money, hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, to, uh, local outfit, uh, additional six thousand dollars at A Q M D. Uh, a couple of Palmdale facilities, we've given away more money in the last probably two years. Uh, because people are hearing about the grant proj- projects that are available out there. So I think that, uh, that's the, the primary takeaway from, uh, the A Q M D meeting, so. All right, uh, what's the next one we got here? A B T, go ahead, sir.
Uh, while I attended the meeting and, uh, you know, we get the reports of, uh, the, uh. Fuel, power, uh, transportation versus, uh, electrical and, uh, the savings are tremendous. Quite a few things that happened.
Oh, yeah, we, we, uh, we looked the metrics over like crazy, but we don't talk about new business, so. That's, that's, that's just, uh. There was a, uh, non-discussion item to, uh. To add another seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars to, to a, a project, so. Anyways, we're trying to work our way through that so that, uh, we can maintain proper transparency on these issues, so. Um. Contract cities, just legislative committee stuff, y'all watching the news, you see where that stuff goes, um, audit committee, anything?
No, we didn't have a meeting.
Uh, investment committee? Anybody, anybody?
No, not me.
Uh, who's on at this?
No.
Uh, hi, there's a quarter, we don't have a meeting, and I think we got another one coming up on a pretty quick. Um, legal city, so the primary thing is, is that, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Loa, you, uh, you attended that last one. And I know that there are a lot of very interesting developments on some of those legislative issues.
Yeah, I think the principal concern for that, uh, session, which was, uh, very compact and, and fast-moving, uh, was SB fifty. That's, uh, Senator Wiener's bill, which at the time seemed, uh, a major concern for the majority of the cities that were represented there. Uh, as it turned out, uh, not too lo- much longer after that, uh, league meeting, uh, SB fifty died a sudden death. Um, but there's other areas of, uh, uh, trying to bring, uh, financing for, for housing. Uh, since redevelopment was lost, there's a couple of efforts that are being made legislatively. Uh, to find other ways of, uh, doing housing to replace, uh, what used to be the redevelopment.
That would be, uh, seven ninety-five.
Seven ninety-five, yeah, and I C one is, was it, or?
Yeah, this.
Seven ninety-five for sure, but there's a, there's two bills going. So it was a very interesting meeting, it was very quick, uh, they, they packed a lot into those.
I told you, it's intense, isn't it? Yeah, you gotta keep your eyeballs open and you're coming to that meeting.
And ears.
Yep.
So it was good, it was good, good meeting.
So, um, just to follow up on that, SB fifty failed, but Atkins made it very clear as the day governor. That that's just, was just one tool, that was just one horse that it was riding on, and it will be, it will be back. And Wiener's got two spot bills, so.
A major concern with what they're attempting to do in Sacramento is to take away local control and to centralize it in Sacramento. And that is problematic. And the concerns are legitimate, um, that we do need to have, uh, additional housing, that's apparent to anyone who has a mind. But we get the state of California giving inconsistent, uh, legislation. On the one hand, saying we need to have more housing, on the other, you know, increasing the amount of regulation and. Requirements that are being imposed on developers, so it is, it's a clash.
Yep, so our last project over here took eight years and ended up costing four hundred thousand dollars per unit, how's that timely or affordable? It isn't, so. All right, well, we're gonna continue to monitor, and I appreciate you being there, sir, uh, I had, uh, a s- sudden. Other commitment that occurred.
That's right, much, well, not bigger, but in any event, uh, significant.
Yep, uh, sanitation district, we had, uh, um, uh, some, um. Mostly budgetary issues we're looking at, uh, the formal, uh, uh, rate structures and things like this. And, uh, I also, uh, had to attend the, uh, personnel committee. And, uh, that's getting very frustrating because we keep losing things down there by one or two votes, and it's always. Neighbors on both sides of us that don't show up, and I, I don't know what to do about it, I've just tried talking to them and we'll see. N C T C, you, uh, wanna report on it, sir?
Yeah, we both, let me see your, your career notes there. Uh, well, one thing that happened is that, uh, I got additional, uh, responsibilities, so I will be, uh, on, on SCAG. And I think we have a meeting coming up this weekend, so. Um, as usual, we get the, um, updates from the highway patrol and the sheriff's department. As to what is happening in terms of fatalities and accidents in our region. Um. Not bad, we got a California high-speed rail update, seems like that's still kicking around, Metro Link, Antelope. And, uh, it was a good meeting chaired by our supervisor, and at one point she had to leave, so you ended up chairing the rest of the meeting.
I did, yep. So, uh, next one was a North County Corridor City meeting, which was, uh, which kinda ties into that. Much more in-depth discussion, uh, it doesn't seem to, didn't seem to get blown through quite as, uh, quickly on that. Um, the most important item, which was in a receiving file, I think, on N C T C. But I've got, uh, um, anybody that's interested, I can make a copy, let me know. Uh, but the, um, S R fourteen, uh, choke point projects are moving forward at this point. The, um, uh, they've identified, uh, uh, three, uh, areas, and they're setting out with the project. And they're setting out with the project initiation document. And uh, there's a whole thing going on here as far as how that process is gonna work. Uh, so uh, it's, it's gonna be adjusted. The thing I found that was really fascinating was I went down to uh, uh, a meeting today. Uh, or yesterday with the, the um Santa Clarita Mayor. And, you know, I left there, they're gonna expand the freeway to three lanes, right? I'm driving down streets of Santa Clarita that are five lanes wide on local streets, so, for whatever that's worth, so. Just uh, somebody, somebody figure that one out for me. Alright, who's next here?
Recycle Water.
Recycle Water Party.
We had a meeting last week. The main item was the reorganization of the board. Where Helen Velador became the Chair and Kathy Maxler the Vice Chair. Um, that was kind of the highlight of that meeting.
Okay, um, SCAG, we've, uh, we had uh air- airport PAC meeting today. Uh, we're uh, talking about regional air issues. It's, it's just, you wanna get bombarded with stats? Yeah. Uh, tag in on that phone call. Uh, but uh, uh, that's, that's a ongoing discussion. Um, and uh, the, the, the basic focus at the last couple of meetings has been on the legislative advance. I'm also on the Legislative Committee there, and uh, it's been these housing bills and moving the R T P forward. Uh, which is the Connect SoCal, and I think we had a local meeting up here as well, right, Curly? Right? So, if you're not familiar with the R T P, you probably ought to read it, especially if you're having a hard time sleeping, so. Oh, tomorrow, um, next item is Sister Cities?
Tomorrow night.
Yeah, tomorrow night. Oh, no, yeah, no, Thursday night, Thursday night.
Thursday night.
That's uh, there's going to be a networking fundraiser uh on Thursday night. And that is going to be at the Embassy Suites in Palmdale. Ten dollars to attend at the door. And they're also planning a, a larger fundraiser in a couple, in a few weeks. I don't recall exactly the date, but anyway, this Thursday night.
That's a timely one.
Right.
What time is it?
At six thirty P M.
Yep.
Excuse me, February sixth, so at the Embassy Suites.
They're, they're trying to just set up like kind of almost like an open house networking thing. Come on in and let's chat type of a deal, so.
It's a good.
They're trying a new, new thing here. Uh, State Prison Committee?
It was dark.
Was dark this one? Okay, um, you wanna go ahead and start on uh, an- an- anything else?
No.
No? Okay, now I do.
I don't wanna start. No, I don't wanna start.
Oh, okay.
I'm at the other end.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and go?
Um, I really have nothing to report. Uh, the only thing was the uh Recycle Water Committee.
Okay, Mister Bishop?
Um, some of the stuff I attended in the last uh month or so, I think it's a little shorter than what we're used to, cuz our last council meeting got pushed back, so there's.
There's only a couple of weeks.
Yeah, there's only a couple of weeks between this one and the last one, so I think that's why we're all a little late. Um, I attended the Palmdale Chamber uh lunch install. Um, they did a, a lunch installation rather than a dinner this time. Um, so it was a little easier to get to, and it was well-attended. Uh, this last weekend, I attended the uh Dollar Tree Ribbon Cutting on N and Fiftieth West.
Thanks for covering that.
Yeah, no problem. I was.
Yeah, nice store, what?
It's really nice. It's super clean. It's nice to see uh business fill that spot up because it's been, they've been having a hard time with that area. Getting, getting a big box retailer. Um, originally, it was that one massive grocery store. I forget the name of it, and they. No, it was, there was, what was, it was something, another grocery store in between the Albertsons that came in. Either way, they, they subdivided it.
There's Albertsons and Smart Final.
No, there was something in between that.
Okay.
I'm gonna look it up.
I missed that.
Of, of, not important, but, um, they uh, they subdivided that, so now it's a Smart and Final and then a Dollar Tree, which is really good because.
These school supplies or party supplies? Man, I tell you what, it's coming, it's coming out your ears in that place.
Yeah, so uh, good shopping on the west side, uh, for a lot of people that live over there that'll, a little further from, from the convenience.
We have to travel all the way to east side to find that stuff.
Oh, come on. Alright, Junior Miss A V, I attended that uh after. Um, I think Miss Patch B won. That was really good. And I uh gave a, a plaque, then I presented it to the uh, to the former Junior Miss A V on behalf of Mayor and Council. Um, I attended the uh High Desert Mental Health Urgent Care Twenty-four Hour Care Center over in Lancaster with Mayor. Uh, that event was put on by the Supervisor's Office, well-attended and much-needed out here, so. Twenty-four hour care for mental health is, it's a big issue of, it is important we get that. It actually ties in exactly with the majority of what our conversation.
Absolutely.
Is tonight. It comes from mental health. That's a big part of it, so I'm glad that the county was able to secure that up here, you know? It's in Lancaster, but still in the A V, and we still, our residents install.
The key is, is that it's adjacent to the medical facility.
And that too. It's adjacent to the medical facility, and it's in the A V, so it's, it's for our residents. Uh, I attended the uh Hispanic Chamber of Commerce today, where our City Manager J J spoke. Packed room, standing room only. I think he did a really good job, and I think the uh, I think the city is really starting, the residents are really starting to resonate with J J and, and. Start to uh welcome him in as our new City Manager. Uh, yesterday, I went to the Steve Owen Memorial. Um.
Yeah, how did you, none of us found out about that?
Uh, Sheriff Boosters, 'cause I'm on the Allen Valley Boosters, I got the invite through that. But yeah, I didn't get anything through the city side, and it was only from being a part of the Allen Valley Sheriff Boosters, I got the invite. So, I apologize that you guys missed it, but um, I was there for that to represent the city. And that was well-attended, and a lot of officers there, a lot of people from the community to go out to show their support, and it really is a beautiful monument. And it's, it's nice. It's uh, it's adjacent to the freeway, so if you're driving down, you pass the park, and you look to the left or right, you'll chances are.
Seen it, big cover over there.
Yeah, you'll chances are you'll be able to see it, so it's nice that, you know, residents driving the freeway, and even people that only, don't live here, that are coming in out of town, will be able to see that. Uh, I was pretty much at more or less for the stuff I attended.
Mister Loa?
Uh, let's see, on uh January eighteenth uh was the uh M L K Block Party that was attended by J J uh and someone else. We could not attend that, I say the mayor and I. We went to the uh Bishop Hearn's son's uh memorial service. Um, so, so we attended that. That was, that was well-attended by many pastors and community members. And, and thank you, Juan, for having invited us to that. That was very important. Um. Uh, on January the twenty-third, I was up at the uh, at the Legal Cities Meeting in Sacramento I talked about here a minute ago. Um. That was on the, January twenty-third and twenty-fourth was uh the meeting itself. Um. Let's see, we talked about the N C T C meeting. Uh, the A B T A Board that we talked about. Uh, let's see, uh Saturday, we, or I attended. And several of us attended the Vets for Veterans Fourth Annual Evening of Community Support at the Hellenic Center. That was very well-attended, and uh, that was a, that was a good uh ceremony to respect and honor uh those who have served in our military. And then immediately after that, we, we went to the Palmdale School District Foundation Third Annual Dinner, where they're raising money for the foundation, and we were able to attend that. A couple of us were. That was held at the U A V Center. Uh, I too went today to the uh Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, uh, as uh Mister Bishop mentioned. Uh, J J gave a very well-received uh message to the entire community. It was very, very well-attended. And uh, I, I agree that there is that bonding going on. That's gonna be essential to your success here in this community. Being local and being involved is so important, J J, and a key to the future. So that happened today, and uh, that was good.
Okay, I'll go now.
So I had you guys go first, cuz I don't have my nose, and I wanted you to remind me of what we did all month.
The truth comes out.
Yeah, that's right, but see, I'm honest about it.
You are.
Um, so I was out of state for um a little while, and then when I came back in, I attended the Vets for Veterans Event. That was really, really nice. And um, I also attended the Hispanic Chamber Luncheon today and watched J J do his presentation. Um, the prison committee was dark, so I didn't attend that, but I will be having one at the end of February if, um, maybe you would like to attend that with me. I also wanna remind everybody that um tomorrow night, we have the um, our first, I believe, Dinner with a Deputy at Ay Ay Ay, right?
That's right, that's right.
So if you, if you guys can make it, it's at six o'clock. I would love to see as many people there as possible. So, everybody go to Ay 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 tomorrow at six o'clock.
Right around the corner from here, Ninth East and Palmdale Boulevard.
Dinner with a Deputy.
Cup, uh, is there coffee with a cup to, cup tomorrow, or?
No, they switched it to dinner with a deputy.
It's dinner with a deputy.
They made the change, okay.
For the people that work, that, that can't go to the Coffee with a Cop, now the people that get off work can actually come.
No excuses.
Come and, and spend time with um, meeting our deputies and, and continuing to build that, that bond and that relationship that we have with our Sheriff's Department here. Our community is so blessed to have the deputies that we have, and the deputies are so blessed to have the community that we have. Because we work so well together, and they have such respect for each other. Um, you don't see that in a lot of other communities, and I, I'm just very, very proud. To be a part of, of both the city and the county. It's an amazing community.
Tomorrow night.
Mm-hmm, tomorrow night, six o'clock, Ay Ay Ay.
I'm gonna pop in and out because we have the new uh meeting that tomorrow.
Okay, come on, boy. I'll be there.
So uh, the after our last council meeting, I attended the uh state hearing at uh Sacramento on the virgin terrains. A couple of questions came up. The uh, the Fed's letter was a little bit too vague for him, so they uh, uh, it's uh, the meeting's coming back up again, I think in about a week and a half. Um, the uh, we had a meeting with some of our local, I'm uh, I'm gonna leave this vague as I can. We had lunch with a um, local um authority, having certain jurisdictions within the city. And it didn't go quite as well as I had hoped it was gonna go. Uh, as far as trying to help spur development, it was kinda like my way or the highway. So we're having discussions with their Board of Directors. I think that may help the, help that dialogue move along. Would you say?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I understand that dialogue's moving along, but also what we're looking at from a staff perspective is. Not so concerned about fees, but looking at other alternatives internally.
Flexibility, yeah.
Where we can maybe defer, or how to get, what we're hearing is how to get them through the process a little more timely, so. Regardless of the external, we're still gonna be successful inside.
We made it, we made it kinda clear that we need to find a solution because we don't wanna end up coming back and saying you were the problem, you know? So, you, you should be part of the solution, so, not you.
The general you.
The other, the other you. Bunch of legislative meetings. I met with the auto dealer reps. Um, before going to uh, um Bishop Hearn's son's um service. Talking, just talking, a lot of general issues and some other development that may be impacting their business. Um, I showed up over there at the uh, at the uh Advanced Communities together, just in time to clean up. Because we were tied up the other thing. Um. The legislative, legislative uh meeting up at Sacramento with the uh, with the, with uh SCAG, I believe it was. A Q M D meeting, we, we spoke about. Um, I went down to try to resolve some questions that were coming up. Um, I met with some of the Biz Fed and B I A folks uh down in L A, uh, because they were misinterpreting uh, uh some moves we were making. And I wanted to uh make it clear, we weren't looking to be hammering them, uh, so uh, we, we had that discussion. It's gonna be ongoing. Uh, several other, oh, and I literally got a last-minute invitation to participate. Uh, in a um, meeting back in D C, literally came up on a Monday night for that Friday. Um, the uh, the discussion was on uh, about eighty mayors from throughout the United States that were invited. And uh, it was on uh transformational uh cities. And uh, we were able to spend time with um, almost all of the fairly significant uh secretaries, cabinet-level folks. Um, specifically uh, Health and Human Services and Housing and Urban Development. And Administrator, the Small Business Administration have a complete list uh of the people that were here. Uh, Deputy Director of the Office of American Innovation, uh Chief of Staff from O M B, uh Housing and Urban Developments, uh. So National Economic Council, uh, and then the uh Secretaries are, like I said, uh. And uh, it culminated uh at the end of the meeting, we um, the President of the United States came in and addressed us at that point. And basically told us, so here was the message we got. The message was, you're not gonna solve it as a city unless you happen to be L A. Or San Francisco, or Detroit, or New York. Uh, you're gonna have to work together on a regional basis, uh partnering, utilizing our opportunity zones. Uh, and uh utilizing uh all the tools in the basket. And then working together on regional solutions, if you wanna move ahead of the class. So uh, it was uh quite remarkable, uh especially being able to talk with uh, uh, be able to literally sit there and spend time with Ben Carson. Who in fact, surprisingly, remembered us when we were back there a couple of years ago, and remembered some issues we were back there on some. When the Section Eight issue was, it was a big issue, you know? So it was, it was pretty cool. So anybody wants to see more details, I'd be happy to uh discuss it. Um, was it the Mental Health Grand Opening that was uh outstanding? Uh, was it a couple of scout events handing out certificates? Um, the Vets for Vets School District, and I was able to go out to the uh Daughters of American Rev- Rev. Boy, they spelled it wrong on here.
Daughters of the American Revolution.
Yeah, that's the ones.
I would've gone to that, but I was out of town.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Cause I'm a member of a chapter, not this chapter.
Yeah, those kids gave, gave some great, great discussions on uh, uh, on a couple of really good topics. Um, the, I met with uh Mayor Smythe in Santa Clarita. Uh, we talked about issues of common concerns. Uh, I participated in the discussion with the Supervisor, uh with Mayor Garcetti and several other mayors on the coronavirus issues. And uh, like I said, we had the, the A TAC meeting, so. Um, and many of the other ribbon cuttings and the other things that you guys have discussed there, so. J J?
Couple of things. Uh, I've attended many of the same events that you've all just mentioned, so I won't go through those, but. Uh, Council Maloa, I am committed to continue to stay engaged in our community, to, to really get the pulse of our community. Uh, I have a couple introductions tonight. Uh, this will be our new Assistant City Manager, Marie's first meeting, Marie Ritchie. Uh, so welcome her, and uh, we had a promotion today. Uh, Carleen is now our new Deputy Director of Economic Community Development and our Acting Planning Manager, so. We're uh, we're blessed to have her. I will be gone the next two days at a uh California City Managers Conference in Northern California. Uh. Last week, we were able uh, based on the uh. Parks and Rec, identifying a potential location for the Boys and Girls Club. We were able to find resolution. Uh, so I appreciate uh Council's, not just patience, but staff's uh continuing to keep the dialogue open with the Boys and Girls Club. So I think that resulted in a good uh alternative, and I think they're looking at an early March uh relocation. Uh, Mike Behan just returned. He was at the University of Virginia all week last week, getting uh trained on our high-performing organization training. And I wanted to invite Council, if you wanna look at your calendars, we are having uh the next training here. From March third through the fifth. It's a three-day training. If you can attend the three days, great, let me know. If not, at least maybe come in at the end of the day on the fifth to see the staff report out of. It's really inspiring uh when they, when they do their final reports, so, that's it. Let me know if you'd be interested in going to the training.
Close my office door most time they were working on it. They get very excited about it.
Uh, the staff is very engaged in this uh training. It's, it's really uh, it's been, been, been well-received.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the meeting out, thank, thanks everyone.
No, I have a couple of, of things on the next item, agenda item, uh requests for new agenda items. Couple of months ago, I asked that the Council be um updated on a couple of programs and contracts that we approved. The E I F Ts, I'd like to know what have they accomplished? We had a lengthy discussion on some potential sites on the east side. I'd like to know if they started looking at any potential I E F Ts of projects. Also, the ARS contract, we talked a little bit about it, but I'd like to know where we are with that.
Which one? Which one?
Arts, the arts um program. I still think that we need to keep uh talking to Caltrans about doing a piece of artwork at the uh roundabout. That's a focal point uh to the city, it's not at the entrance, but it's heavily used, and I think that we need to continue uh working with Caltrans to see we can do something on that. Um last month, under the briefings, when we had the uh new uh trudge truck out here, I mentioned if we could have a uh trudge pickup on the east side, 'cause last year, when it was uh scheduled because of rain, it got canceled. Now that we have that vehicle, I think we need to put it to use. I've been getting some calls from residents letting me know about dump sites, and I uh forward those to staff. Thank you for taking care of those, uh so we can-
We have several coming up, don't we?
Yeah, that that's sort of the service, season of service or something like that, like we can do something uh to utilize that truck.
Well, Verrill Springs is horrible, by the way.
The other thing is uh if we can get an update on the trackets uh program, it's been three years, one point three million dollars later, and we still don't have that up and running. If we can get an update on that, because that's something that is about customer service.
Take a note.
And we need to know where we are with that. That's it. Only a few things.
Anybody else? So you hit on a couple, I I'm I'm sorry, I didn't mean to skip over that.
Councilman, I will tell you that um we haven't heard on the EIF- EIFD in months, but I'm meeting tomorrow with Larry Cosma on this issue.
Timing's everything. Okay, okay, anybody else? City Attorney?
Uh just one thing, um I think one, Laura may be aware of this, but there's a, we're having a big staff meeting for the PRWA tomorrow uh in order to kinda plan out twenty-twenty and where we're going, and there's gonna be some big uh decisions coming out of that, I think. It's uh nine o'clock in the morning at PWD's offices. It's a staff meeting, you you could go, but-
Can you update us afterwards?
Yeah, we'll, we'll update you, yeah.
Great. I'm coming home without a dog.
Jeremy and the Marine.
Yes, we'll uh in memory of everybody we listed earlier. Thank you.